Por favor levante la mano para darle un audífono. Gracias. Thank you.
Thank you. We have headsets for the hearing impaired if you need them. Introductions, proclamations, presentations, or recognitions. Dr. Sarvas.
Well, I'm pleased to recognize someone who's just an outstanding teacher. With us tonight is Jamie DeVries from San Marcos High School, a 12th grade government, economics, and history teacher. Jamie was recently named the 2010-2011 Santa Barbara County Distinguished Educator by the County Education Office. Jamie, would you come up to the podium? I'm sure the board will want to talk to you, but let me brag on you a little bit before you -- before I turn it over to them. And I'll tell you about Jamie. Jamie is an amazing teacher. He's been teaching all levels of American government, economics, and U.S. history at San Marcos High School for 11 years. He has taught senior social science courses, including AP microeconomics, AP macroeconomics, Introduction to Economics, Fundamentals of Economics, and College Prep: American Government. Jamie earned his BA in Economics and Business at Westmont College, and he received his credential from Chapman University. When he started teaching at San Marcos after a year at Santa Inez High -- thank you for coming over the hill. Thank you, Jamie. There is only one section of AP Government and no sections of Econ. The first year that he was able to teach an AP Economics class, 34 -- excuse me, 33 of his 34 students passed the AP exams. There are now three sections of both AP microeconomics and AP macroeconomics in addition to AP Government, and the students perform very well on those AP exams. Board members, I think you've seen those results. Jamie has led advanced placement workshops statewide and has presented at various social studies and history seminars, symposia, and workshop. We know of his work in the students supporting the Unity Shop and their efforts. We've reported on those a number of times. Congratulations, Jamie, on your selection as Santa Barbara County Distinguished Educator, and thank you for all you do for our students.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, I see Mr. Noel, I've had your son, and Mr. Heron. You know, we love the -- I love being able to take my students to the economics forecast at the Granada, and the rest of you that have supported us at the Unity Shops function. You know, those kids, honestly, I would love to take the credit, but I can't. I work in a terrific district, and I work under great administration team, and I'll have to say I have the -- no offense to the other kids out here, I have the best kids in the district, so I'm pretty proud of them. So, thank you.
Do you have a guest with you?
I do. Actually, I have -- my parents-in-law are visiting from Colorado, so I'm really honored to have them. First, I can't forget my beautiful wife Tiffany DeVries. Yeah. And the shoemakers are visiting, and they're -- I have a brother-in-law and a sister-in-law here in Santa Barbara, so it's Tom and Sandy, the shoemaker, all the way out here, so they decided to come tonight and support me, so honored to have them.
That's great. Thank you for sharing your husband with us.
Yeah. Thank you.
No other presentations. Shall I continue with the superintendent's report?
Yes.
Good. Well, we're just starting a new school year. Actually, it is beginning. Thursday of this week is the first day of school for our elementary schools that are year-round schools. Both Santa Barbara Community Academy and Cleveland Elementary start the new school year in just two days. We continue to monitor the status of layoffs. In June, 60 staff members were laid off. Well, actually, they were laid off earlier, but by June, our number had risen to 60. This includes three from management who will return to the classroom, and four teachers who have rights to move to other school sites. And all that's 65.62 full-time equivalents. The total number of staff who were rescinded in the school year, in the 2009-2010 school year, is 20. Additionally, one staff member was rescinded from the previous school year, from 2008-2009. Those positions reflect 16.65 full-time equivalents. So, you know, all of those people did not lose their jobs, we're happy to report, and we will continue to follow as we get resignations or people leaving the area over the summer. We will also have temporary positions for some of our people. At this time, the total number of temporary positions offered in the secondary district and child development will be filled by six of our staff members. So, that's six additional jobs, which reflect 5.0625. That's quite a number, full-time equivalents. A little over five full-time equivalents. Well, Saturday, Ed Heron and two of our board members, Board Member Parker and Deacon, were at the Dos Pueblos Groundbreaking for the Dos Pueblos Engineering Academy's Ealing Center for Engineering Education. It was a well-attended event. I was amazed at the number of people who showed up Saturday, late Saturday afternoon. This is a $6 million project. The structure accounts for $4.35 million of the project, and the remainder will be used to equip the building. And I know in one article I read, it said that the building was a $2.3 million building. It's in fact a $4.3 million building. We're using state matching funds for a good half of it, and our foundation has really worked hard with a number of members of the community, really stepping up to the plate with contributions, and I've reported on a number of those in the past. Measure V Bond Funds have made an incredible impact on the lives, and Measure V is our last bond funding that was passed in 2000. They have made an incredible impact on the lives of children and students in our community. One example is captured in a video posted on the Internet produced by CYPAC, the Marjorie-Luke Theater Partner. And I encourage you to see the video posted on their homepage and on YouTube. Board, you have a sheet, and there's one over on the side table that shows the link to that YouTube. I think you'd love to see it. Dos Pueblos High School students produced H2O Yay -- or is that yeah? A water-saving public service announcement for the Santa Barbara County Water Agency. Thank you, Jamie, and family. The public service announcement is posted on YouTube as well, and the address is provided on this sheet, so take a look at that one as well. The Board Brief. My office regularly issues a report to the Board called the Board Brief. It's a collection of articles and information items on school and district matters. A copy of the June 2nd Board Brief is on display in the reception area. In our last Board Brief, the Board saw a number of reports, including need for fully-qualified educators and emergency permits, which explains a little more of the need for people to have emergency commits while they're -- permits while they're in a training program; seniors that did not graduate, which is a report on what happened and why the seniors did not graduate; and a copy of the Godby Research Bond Measure feasibility study, which showed the community's support for our bond measure. Well, before we made it a bond measure, for the possibility of a bond measure. So, I wanted to alert the Board and public that those are available in public in the Board Brief, and that concludes the superintendent's report.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions for Dr. Sarvas? C2, Board Comments and Correspondence. Mrs. Deacon?
First, I just would like to say how exciting it was to be Saturday at the groundbreaking for the Ealing's Engineering Academy, and what a fantastic turnout. Dr. Ealing's mentioned how it is possibly unique to have that many parents come out for an academically-sponsored project. We have lots of boosters for the arts and athletics, but here are all these folks there cheering on engineering, which was really exciting, so. What I'd also like to talk about, though, tonight is the fact that last week, the Santa Barbara Education Foundation voted to take the lead role in the campaign for the two bond measures. And as you know, the Education Foundation was incredibly successful when they spearheaded the H&amp;I campaign in 2008, and I think it's safe to say they're very energized about this role. I know it's going to be an awful lot of work, and for a volunteer organization in particular, and I want to thank them for taking this on and for their dedication to our schools. We have two -- the two co-chairs here with us tonight, Lynn Rodriguez and Mark Ingles. Mark is the president of SBEF, and I know we all know Lynn. And so, they're getting busy gearing up and recruiting members for their steering committee endorsements, and Mr. Heron and I will be serving as ex-officio members for the steering committee and being a resource as far as we're legally allowed to participate in this campaign. So, right now, I think they're waiting for a name to be assigned to these measures, as I expect we are as well, so they can get up and running. But I wanted to thank them for their involvement in this. I know it's a lot of work, and it's very much appreciated.
Thank you, Lynn. Thank you, Mark. We look forward to our exciting 112 days.
The clock is ticking.
And the other board members? Okay. Excuse me. C3, Announcement of Closed Session Action. On B1, we discussed the items, and we'll have -- they'll be on the agenda for E6. On B2, we had three requests for inter-district transfer appeals. The motion by Parker, seconded by Cordero, to approve appeal number 2010/11-32. The vote was five yes, zero no. A motion by Parker, seconded by Noel, to deny an appeal for 2010/11-34. The vote was four yes with one no. The no was Mrs. Cordero. A motion by Parker, seconded by Deacon, to approve the appeal in 2010/11-35. The vote was five yes, zero no. And on B3, it was pulled from the agenda. C4, Public Comments.
Yes, we have three speakers who have submitted slips to speak during public comment. We will begin with Chris Grant, followed by Gina Perry, followed by Lauren Mason.
Members of the Board, Dr. Sarvas, Ms. Sawoski, and Mr. Smith. Last February, we spent many hours and meetings together to develop a comprehensive honors program plan. From all of the community outpour on both sides of the issue, I think we all came to realize that the honors program is much more than a name change. Really, it's an entire paradigm shift in the way that quality advanced learning is to embrace and support the children of our district. It essentially was an eight-point plan. Developed a four-tier class system, provided criteria for admission into the honors. It defined how course descriptions will be developed and evaluated to maintain the highest level of rigor. It provided for teacher preparation and professional development to address both needs of the -- both the needs of advanced learners and the very realities of having a much more stratified class. It defined what criteria students must meet to stay in the program and identified methods of support for those who were struggling. It provided outreach to students and parents to identify barriers, to learn and address their needs, and to educate the community about advanced learners. It provides for enrichment opportunities specifically for the Gate-identified students, and it specifically identified the need for an outside agency to evaluate the program and to have a proposal for evaluation prepared before the school term began. Last Saturday, after watching the board meeting on Channel 18, I was a little shocked and thought I was grossly mistaken. I didn't think that you'd want the voting public to think that for the first 10 months of the program, you were only evaluating the number of students in the classes and the number of honors courses offered. Why give up an entire year of evaluating the quality of education, which, as we all know, goes far beyond the year-end benchmarks or standardized tests? Quality, to me, means what we do on a daily basis, how we are inspiring and supporting our students. While there is mention of a survey, there is nothing demonstrating how that survey will be implemented or how the district will maintain its accountability by providing professional development for its teachers. The evaluation plan, as stated, never mentions how the highest rigors will be maintained or who will be accountable for maintaining them. There is nothing that demonstrates how effective we have been at identifying those students who are struggling early on so that support can be provided and success can be better achieved. There are no objective goals set so that we can verify if we are on track to meet them. So, I sat down, and I sketched out what I thought a plan might look like. After getting feedback and support from Parents for Excellence in Public Schools, I passed it on to you and have provided you a copy tonight. I hope you will find it a little more comprehensive and more in line with the secondary district honors coursework plan that the Board adopted as public policy on March 23rd. It addresses each section of the plan. I think it's essential that the district gets some outside help to more formally develop a comprehensive evaluation, and I think that if you do it smartly, you don't have to spend gobs of money to do it. I want your plan to succeed. As I said before, I'll be happy to work with you on developing a new plan. Please take this up for discussion at your next board meeting and revisit the evaluation plan that you passed last week. Let the community know you really support the plan that you worked so hard to develop.
Thank you, Mr. Grant. Gina Perry, followed by Lauren Mason. Again, I will let you know when you have 30 seconds.
Happy summer. It feels criminal to be sitting inside on our first glorious summer day. I'm here also to talk about the honors program evaluation. The new honors program, as we know, affects almost half of our secondary students. It is a substantial change from the past and a program that really polarized our community, unfortunately. A number of parents, those of honor students and gifted students alike, express concerns about the curriculum. Would it be too hard? Would it be hard enough? Would teachers be able to handle such a diverse range of learning abilities? Frankly, no one knows. The evaluation part of the honors program was designed to give us this information, to allow both the Board and the public to see if the program is working for students and teachers, and give us the information to fix it if we need to. We realize it comes with a cost, but again, we can't know what the cost will be until we have a proper evaluation written and submit it for bids. The district can request tiered bids, by which I mean, we can submit the evaluation and say, okay, we have -- what can we get for $5,000? What can we get for $10,000? What can we get for $50,000? Proper evaluation is a tool for success and much more than a simple, non-scientific survey. It's our hope that the proposal submitted by the district at your last meeting is just the initial phase of the evaluation development. We've submitted a draft evaluation that we believe would be a good starting point. We'd be happy to work with the district during the remaining summer months and into the school year to meet the deadline set by the Board in the honors program. It's our belief that a sound and scientific evaluation of the honors program, a program that affects almost half of our secondary students, would go a long way toward boosting the public's trust in the Board and the district. We request that the honors program evaluation be put on the agenda for your next meeting to move it forward and have it in shape to submit for bids if bids haven't been requested before then. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Perry. Lauren Mason?
On March 23rd, this Board voted to stop teaching Gate classes in this district. As part of that plan, this Board guaranteed that Gate students taking honors classes would be taught at the same rigor or standards that they were taught in Gate classes. This evaluation plan for honors classes was to include an outside agency evaluation. After listening to your discussion before a vacant boardroom at the last board meeting, it is evident that you had no idea how much this would cost and how you would go about executing an evaluation plan. Don't you think you should have given this more thought before you eliminated the Gate classes? At the March 9th board meeting, I proposed that you phase out the Gate program instead of eliminating it all at once. Such statements as "it would cost $30,000 to develop a proper study," "this may cost more money or expense than we can put together," "to do it right would require a considerable amount of money," should have been discussed and disclosed before you made your decision to guarantee an evaluation by an outside agency. A statement by a board member at the last meeting that I'm not wedded to an outside agency seems a little puzzling now after the fact. The comparison of course descriptions or syllabi of Gate classes to honors classes to prove the rigor of the honors classes will not give an accurate result unless you require teachers to produce course outlines and schedules that they must achieve. Remember, there were Gate parents that were concerned that honors courses would be taught at a lower speed and that there would be more disruptions in the classroom. Mandating the use of a district-wide software like Area or Edline, requiring all teachers to post their outlines and schedules online, and requiring all teachers to say on those schedules by posting all student work in a timely manner, you would go a long way in proving the rigor. The only classes that I've seen do this are AP classes that have to meet a rigorous schedule in order to prepare the students for their exams in April. If you do this along with using benchmark exams and CST scores, I think that you will be able to prove if the honors courses are taught at or above the level of the old Gate classes. All the talk about stakeholders groups, online and mailed-out surveys, teacher, staff, student, parent surveys, representative group surveys will not produce anything other than a mixed bag of different agendas. I know that a -- I know that as a concerned Gate parent, the results of any honors survey would not be something that would convince me that honors classes were taught at or above the level of Gate classes. I would need to see that the classes were taught using the same challenging curriculum and achieving the same benchmarks that the Gate classes met during the school year. I am asking this Board to show some leadership by directing the secondary school principals and teachers to develop honors course outlines and schedules that are similar to those used by AP classes, and then hold them accountable. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mason. That concludes public comment.
Thank you. Just a comment in general. I appreciate very much the work that went into the document presented, and I'm sure that when we get to the end of the agenda, under Future Agenda Items, I -- there might be possibility that might be talked about at that time.
On a future agenda?
On a future agenda, yeah.
But you don't mean talked about in a substance?
No, no, just about the request for a future agenda item. C5, Acceptance of Donations.
Move to accept with appreciation.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
Motion carried unanimously. The Consent Agenda. Items to be polled. Dr. Noel.
D6, please.
Mrs. Parker? Mrs. Deacon?
Board, you'll note on item D1 that the minutes that are tagged two years ago are being omitted.
Okay.
I would like to poll D3. Mrs. Cordero?
Go ahead.
No, go ahead.
I was going to ask to poll, sorry, D21. And I think that's -- I think that's it. Thank you.
Okay, D3 I would like to poll.
I think it's been D3.
D18. But I had one more. Oh, yes, okay. Okay. Do I have a motion for the balance?
Move to approve the remaining consent agenda items. Second.
Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried unanimously. We'll move to the Action Agenda. E1, Approval of Appointment of Ex-Officio Board Representative to Adelante Charter Schools' Board of Directors.
Board, at the time, the school board approved the Adelante charter. They noted that in the governing board bylaws for the Adelante charter, it called for an ex-officio member, and the board was interested in appointing someone or recognizing one of our own board members to serve in that role.
Do you have a motion?
I have a question. Is it -- it's not a voting member?
No, it's not a voting member.
And that's what the ed code calls for? I thought charter schools had to have a member.
It can go either way.
Yeah. It's as called for by the charter.
Oh, okay.
Mrs. Parker?
Well, if she doesn't object, I'm going to move that Mrs. Cordero be the representative if that works with her schedule.
I would be happy to continue to serve in that role, and I'm assuming that the meetings are -- meeting schedule is similar to what it has been, and I think that will continue to work in my --
We should meet every night.
Every night.
Do I have a second?
Twice on Saturdays.
I'll second the motion. Any for the discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carried unanimously. Thank you, Mrs. Cordero. E2.
Board -- Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Approval of Adelante Charter School Facilities Use Agreement.
Board, we have in front of you a facilities use agreement with the proposed changes from the school district. I'd like to note that this has not yet been approved by the Adelante Charter Schools' Board, and I would also like to note that, given that there is a differential in the prorata share for facilities for in-district students and students who are not in-district students, that the Adelante Board does see this as a hardship to them and is concerned about their budget. So, I just wanted to bring that to your attention.
Mrs. Cordero?
Well, I was aware of the fact that Adelante believes that this will be -- could possibly create a deficit in their budget as they had planned it, and I was wondering why we determined that it would be double the amount of an in-district student. Is that based on actual cost, or was it just a particular formula that we used? And what would be the impact if we made it one and a half instead of double?
Let me see if I can answer those in sequence. It's not statutorily prescribed. It was a fiscal disincentive, and the fiscal disincentive, we thought, should be significant enough because having in-district students that attend charters adversely affect the elementary because of its basic status. I couldn't actually quantify what the difference between twice and one and a half would be because it's a function of how many in-district students you have at that point in time.
But if anybody has a calculator, Mr. Heron, there is an estimate here, so.
Yes, and we did compare that with market rate, which is considerably higher.
So, Mr. Heron, if I may?
Mrs. Parker?
So, market rate would be higher even than the double prorata?
I'm going to let Dave and Meg talk, because Dave has a pretty good handle on market rate, and I know Meg worked on this language as well.
The market rate for going out in the community and using other spaces would be more than the double, the prorata share. With our civic center, basically, our direct fee and our market rate, one is basically twice the other. So, as a starting point, we assigned twice the prorata share for the out-of-district students, which is still less than what the market rate would be out in the community for renting another facility.
I'd like -- oh, go ahead.
I would like, if Adelante has some comments on this, I think I'd like to hear them.
And I would like to also note that we have left the door open in the event that this does create major problems with the budget, that we're willing to engage in further negotiations about it.
Well, again, thank you for the opportunity to be here, and again, we want to express how appreciative we are of the collaboration with the district. It's been, I think, a really mutually beneficial process for everyone. I would like to urge you, however, to reconsider the new formula, keeping in mind that by last Wednesday, we had a budget already, we thought, approved and agreed on of about 88, a little over 88,000. And when we got this on Friday, I think it was, or Thursday, the new figures are 117,000. Our Board had met the previous Monday, and we had approved a budget for next year, and with these new numbers, we will have to go back and make unanticipated, and I feel really unfortunate, cuts to our budget. We are a very small school. Compared to other charter schools, we have not very many in-district transfer students. We have made a commitment this year to minimize enrollment of out-of-district students. That is a commitment that we are making. However, as a charter school, we feel that we cannot blanketly just deny any student from out of the district. That is one of the advantages. That is one of the advantages of, of being a charter school. I myself live in Carpinteria and wanted to come to this school because I believed in the mission of Cesar Chavez and now Adelante. We're also a new charter, if you will, and we all know the impact that the budget can have on the education of children, and we would ask that, at least in our first year getting up and running, that you would perhaps wait on implementing what I think is a, is a new policy, unless all of the other charters have this in their FUAs for this coming year, that you might wait and as a board decide to come to a policy, perhaps for all charter schools. But because we're new, we're starting out, we've already approved a budget, I would just encourage you to, to wait so that we could actually negotiate this. This was something that was not negotiated between the parties. It was simply given to us at the end of last week. That's all I need to say.
Mrs. Parker?
Just a question for Mr. Smith. It looks like, given what, Dr. Doctorman, Mrs. Doctorman?
Dr. Doctor.
Dr. Doctor? That they, that there's about a sixteen thousand dollar differential for.
Sixteen six oh eight point five oh.
Sixteen six oh eight.
Point five oh.
They already had underestimated then by.
I mean, if you're going to move from, yeah, if you're going to move from the twice to, to midpoint, I guess, yeah.
Okay.
From two hundred to one fifty.
And I do want to say that, you know, our other charter schools don't have this in place at this point, but the idea, I think, is to make sure that something is implemented for all the charters as their agreements come up, but we can't go back and change their current agreements.
I think that was always an underlying premise.
Right.
Do we, can I ask a question? Do we have an estimate of when that might happen? Is that like when the charters come up for renewal?
It's when the charters come up for renewal.
And what are those dates?
I think two years on both, I believe.
No, it's twenty twelve for charter, for Peabody Charter and twenty thirteen.
Okay.
For Santa Barbara Charter.
Mrs. Deacon?
I have a question, too. The MOU, I think implicitly, is for four years, correct? Kind of coincidental with the term of the charter. So, Dr. Sarvis, when you talked about leaving the door open on this, would we revisit it in a, a new MOU, or how do we implement that piece?
That was a question of Dr. Sarvis. You mentioned you leave it open. What does that mean?
That would welcome the charter to come in, sit down, and talk with us. So.
And the MOU can be changed at any time with the agreement of all the parties, is that correct?
We can change the MOU, yes.
Mrs. Cordero?
The section that says, I'm trying to find where the sentence starts. Charter schools' prorata share of the district's facilities costs shall be determined in consultation with the charter school by the Director of Fiscal Services of the district and calculated in accordance with the formula provided in Proposition thirty-nine implementing regulation section whatever, and shall be recalculated each year as needed. So I was assuming that was, the recalculated each year as needed was the part that you were referring to as leaving the door open?
Yeah, the prorata share is actually recalculated each year, and it's based on deferred maintenance and square footage. So for each of the charter schools, there's a recalculation of that rate.
And the prorata share would include the, what were the charge for the out-of-district students?
That's in addition to. So the prorata share are those, is a function of those factors that Dr. Sarvis just basically identified, and they're dynamic. They change every year based on the budget and based on the number of square footage that are occupied, and so it's not going to be the exact same number every year, although it'll be approximately the same. But the inter-district issue is in addition to.
Okay. So the numbers of students, as they change from year to year, will determine that.
Mrs. Parker?
Would there be any issue with adding language into the section that said, if the district provides facilities for out-of-district students, the prorata share, charge for out-of-district students will be twice the in-district student rate starting in twenty eleven, twenty twelve, to give them a year to prepare for that?
I don't see an issue there. I mean.
What I like about doing that is that that way, we're also starting the role for all three of our charters, because Peabody will be coming forward in twenty twelve, and then Santa Barbara Charter in twenty thirteen, if they even come to us for a charter. And my, that seems like it would be a good, a good way of giving everybody a heads up, and then they, there wouldn't be any issue in the discussion for the other charters. There wouldn't be any surprises and nothing last minute. So that would be my proposal.
What, what does that mean for twenty ten, eleven?
That means that, that for, they, they would pay the same rate for in district and out-of-district students for twenty ten, eleven.
Right, and they get the surcharge the following year.
And get the surcharge starting in twenty eleven, twenty twelve.
Does the language cover that?
No, my, I would include the new language.
Yeah, but by including new language, it is moot on what happens immediately.
If the district provides facilities for out-of-district students, the prorata share charge, I think it, it becomes, if you indicate that it starts in twenty eleven, twelve, then it is implicit that there is no charge before twenty eleven, twelve for those out-of-district students. No extra charge, I should say.
And since it's a four-year MOU, it would memorialize the practice with an effective date of next fiscal year.
So.
That's certainly what the school is asking for.
Okay. I would move that we approve the Adelante Charter Schools Facilities Use Agreement with language on Section four, prorata share of facilities costs amended as indicated, which will be the sentence that ends, out-of-district students will be twi, the prorata share charge for out-of-district students will be twice the in-district student rate starting in twenty eleven, twenty twelve.
Is there a second?
Second. Can we make that cost per square foot? Because it's not a, see, on, on my sheet, it's a cost per square footage.
And your, on your sheet? Is that one of the appendixes?
On Exhibit B.
So you didn't like the language that was in the existing paragraph?
The one that you just read?
On page three.
Are you asking that we insert, insert per square foot after what prorata share charge?
That would be, I think that would be more accurate.
Okay, so it should read this, the prorata share charge per square foot for out-of-district students will be twice the in-district per square footage rate, starting in twenty eleven, twenty twelve.
You can probably just insert it at the first.
Can I, can I start right at the beginning of the change and just put, beginning with fiscal year twenty eleven dash twelve, if the district?
I will accept that, yes, absolutely.
And then we'll, we'll put the, after the prorata charge, put per square foot between charge and four?
Perfect.
Mrs. Cordero?
Is, I assume the per square foot is for in-district students as well, correct? So wouldn't, would it be better to put it just at the very beginning? Charter schools shall pay a prorata share per square foot of the district's facilities costs, so that it covers in-district as well as out-of-district students?
The first part, the prorata share, is clearly covered under the codes as to how you calculate it. So if you want to put per square foot or not, it would make no difference. What we're saying then is, for the out-of-district students, we, we don't, we take the, twice the square foot charge.
Okay.
Further discussion?
Can I just ask that we hyphenate out-of-district?
Yes, you can.
You can ask, okay. Any other?
I'm sorry, was there a second on my motion? I can't remember.
Yes.
I think Mrs. Cordero did. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried unanimously.
Thank you, board.
Thank you, Adelante. E three.
We do have principals and APs coming for this. They, it was scheduled for eight o'clock. I don't know if we want to go forward without them in the room, if you have questions, or it's.
We're going to surprise them. They'll sometimes be out earlier than normal.
Imagine that, right?
But we will jump to E four.
Okay, thank you.
We've trained them very well that we're never early.
Second reading, approval of opening negotiations with California School Employee Association.
Board, you have seen this before, in fact, you've approved it before, but we wanted to give legal opportunity for the public to provide additional input, and that's the only reason it is on tonight's agenda for action as a second reading.
Mrs. Deacon?
Well, I'll move to go ahead and approve the second reading and approval of opening negotiations with the California School Employee Association.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried unanimously.
Thank you.
E five, adoption of Resolution number twenty ten slash eleven dash oh one in support of litigation challenging the state's school finance system.
Board, this proposal came to us from CSBA, and a number of districts around the state are supporting the lawsuit. You have a proposed resolution in front of you that would ask that you also support the lawsuit.
Can you amplify why you're recommending it?
I'm recommending it because of board, I, I asked, I said, if the board has any interest in this, I will put it on the agenda for board action or board discussion, and I had a board member state in our last meeting that she would like to have this brought forward for possible action on the part of the board.
But I read this, that you're recommending it.
Based on that, yes.
Has anybody read the long?
Well, I have, you know, there, there's always an issue.
A little briefing, I'd like to be helpful, because I haven't read it.
Yeah.
Is it here?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
There's always the issue of whether a court matter gains anything by having, taking a political stand on it, and I believe I indicated in my email to you that, that I don't know what advantage there is to the court proceedings.
Mrs. Parker?
Well, I, I wanted it to come forward for discussion, and there is no advantage in terms of how this goes in court, but the CSBA, AXA, the California Teachers Association, many parent education groups, there, this is as much a political statement as it is a court case, and that's one of the reasons why I thought it was important to discuss, because there, there are issues in here that I don't know that I necessarily perfectly agree with in terms of, are we spending too little on the schools or not? But I absolutely believe that our funding system is completely dysfunctional, and I think it's important for school board members around the state to make their voices heard on how schools are funded. It's an important part of our jobs to step forward and let Sacramento know, more than a particular court or judge, that we agree with the CSBA and with the other litigants, that the legislation, legislators need to do something and need to do it now about how schools are funded.
Mrs. Cordero?
I agree with Mrs. Parker. I think that the reason I would support the board adopting this resolution is because I think it's important for school boards throughout the state to hold the state administration and state legislature accountable for how badly education, the educational systems in our, in our state have been treated in the last several years, and to acknowledge that the school districts together are voicing our objections to the way that that's been handled. And I agree with Mrs. Parker that it, I, I don't anticipate this having a great deal of impact with the court, but I certainly would hope that it has some weight and some impact on the thinking of the legislature and the administration and that, and I think clearly, the way that funding has been handled over the last few years for education has impacted the quality of education that we are able to offer our students in this district and in districts throughout the state. And so that's my reasoning behind why I think it's appropriate for a school district, and in fact, I think really incumbent upon school districts to voice our concern in this way.
Mrs. Deacon?
I was struck reading this that the state really has a double, sets a double standard. On the one hand, they require us to, to follow these mandates, they set standards that they expect us to, to rise to, and then on the other hand, they don't fund it adequately. And so for me, that's a pretty compelling reason, as well as, as the other board members have stated, to just really reinforce to the public and the legislature that it, it is a dysfunctional funding system. I've heard the word Byzantine used multiple times to describe it, and it's, it doesn't work, it's broken. And so while this may not have a huge impact on our local level immediately, you know, I think it's important for us to take a position, so I would certainly support this.
Dr. Noel? Any comments?
Well, I, I can't, I'm not going to support a, supporting a particular lawsuit that I have studied and had some legal advice on. I would support something that would, that would, I would support the spirit. I would support the challenge. I would, I would support the effort to put, to bring about transformational change. But the, I mean, this, this is not enough detail about a lawsuit to, I, I, I would, you know, it's saying the district is going to do this, and that's not me.
Yeah, I'm not going to support it for a lot of reasons I won't go into, but I don't, number one, I don't like lawsuits, never have, and number two, you don't know what you're going to get, it's going to be better or worse. My guess would be we wouldn't have basic aid, that they would come up with some solution, everybody got the same, and we've been fighting to get to basic aid. I think it's probably a direct attack on Prop thirteen, which I'm not in favor of at this point. So there's a lot of reasons that I would not want to go, I don't want to go down this road, so I'll, I'll be voting no on it.
Further discussion? How about a motion?
Well, I just have one quick point, because I did want to bring up what you, what you raised about basic aid, because I did think about that. And this was a case where I really felt like this was in the best interests of the students of California and not necessarily the students in our district, although I think it would be. I mean, we came into basic aid because of cuts to funding, not because we're at a high rate, and it has always been so disheartening to be next door to districts that get double or triple what we get to spend on students. And it is so inequitable that I've always felt like the basic aid funding system is completely unfair, and I don't want to say, well, now that I'm basic aid, I'm going to throw all my principles out the window. So I, I, I think that basic aid is part of the inequity in, in school funding in California. And so I'm going to go ahead and make a motion to adopt the Resolution twenty ten slash eleven dash oh one in support of litigation challenging the state's school finance system.
Second.
Discussion?
I'll just say that I also contemplated the basic aid issue, because I think we probably, it all crossed all of our minds as we looked at this, but ultimately, it's about equity for every student across the state, and I, I feel like we, we were cut into basic aid, we also made some, some proactive moves by limiting inter-district transfers, but we did that because that was the line where money was being handed out, and, but in the end, I, I would much rather see it fairly distributed across the whole state to every student.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No? Motion passes three to two, with Heron and Noel voting no.
Should we go on to E six?
We'll go to E six, approval of board action on student discipline case number oh nine slash ten dash forty-two.
I move that the stipulated agreement, that the board reject the stipulated agreement and refer the case to an administrative. and refer the case to an administrative hearing panel.
And that's in case 0910-42? Okay, I'll second that.
Discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried unanimously in 09/10-52.
I'll move to approve the recommendation of the hearing panel for one school year expulsion.
Second?
Discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried unanimously. I think we need to go back to E3. I see two principals here. Yeah, unfortunately, yeah, okay. Okay, two out of three. Okay. We will go to E3, approval of name change for Santa Barbara Continuation High School, San Marcos Continuation High School, and Dos Pueblos Continuation High School.
Okay, thank you. You did receive a board brief on this explaining a little bit of the background on it and also the ed code on continuation high schools. Just briefly for anyone in the audience and public, we do have a continuation school, high school on each of our comprehensive high schools now. They used to be under the umbrella of LaCuesta, and they have always carried their own names, and they are technically with the state of California called the Santa Barbara High School Continuation, High School, San Marcos Continuation High School, and Dos Pueblos Continuation High School. The schools that they develop, as they develop their programs, are now at the point where they'd really like to rename their schools within the school. And you've got the proposed names here. I know we did a similar kind of process last year with LaCuesta, and it came back to where the board at that point really liked us to provide names rather than giving you a multitude of names. So, we asked the schools, they talked to their teams, and what they've come up with is Santa Barbara High School's continuation school would be called Santa Barbara Alternative High School. San Marcos program, or school, excuse me, continuation school would be San Marcos Bridge High School. And Dos Pueblos High School's continuation school would be Dos Pueblos Charter Academy. So, we have Charger, excuse me, not Charter, ooh, big change. Yes, not Charter. I'm thinking from last couple of agenda items ago, Charger, which is their mascot. Dos Pueblos Charger Academy. And so we have Dr. Mark Caprito here and Sean Carey. Mark is from Santa Barbara High School and Sean Carey from Dos Pueblos, if you have questions. I think someone from San Marcos will be walking in otherwise, but I'm open to answer questions as well as they are.
Dr. Noel?
Just, I'm assuming that these continue to have their, their own CDS code numbers?
Absolutely. All of this is, is a change, we would request a change, and the CDS code remains the same. They remain continuation high schools.
I'm assuming that Mr. Smith's explanation of the funding remains unchanged.
Yes.
That's correct.
Yes, that's correct.
And actually, I just found my notes from when I did the original research for you, stuck in one of my books the other day, and I said, hey, I better hang on to this. Somebody's going to ask me this again.
Dr. Sarvis and Robin, Mrs. Swawsky, are you recommending these changes?
Yes, we are.
Mrs. Deacon?
There's a part of me that really likes uniformity and sameness, but on the other hand, I, when I weigh that against the desires of the school, I don't feel the need to impose uniformity on the school. So, I'm, I'm fine with the names. I think they've kind of evolved. They've grown organically at those campuses. That's what they're known for. So, I'm in favor, and I'd actually be willing to make a motion just to get the discussion going here to approve the name change and approve the names of Santa Barbara Alternative High School, San Marcos Bridge High School, and Dos Pueblos Charger Academy for the respective continuation schools.
Second?
May I, you do me a favor and drop the Dos Pueblos High School name, just have the motion with the first two and deal with Dos Pueblos separately?
Okay. I, I mean, I actually would like to, actually, I would like to move to just to P3.
Okay, fine. Was there a second, Mrs. Cudero? Okay. And Mr. Noel, Dr. Noel?
I simply wanted to say, we, we, these are new bottles, and, and we want, we hope for really a lot of new wine, that the, that does not be the same old stuff. Thank you.
Mrs. Parker?
I'm very willing to support this motion. Obviously, I know, Ms. Carey, you put in a speaker slip. I don't know if you particularly want to speak to this item, or, yes, or Dr. Caprito, but I suspect you might have a board majority, so, okay. I don't have any questions about it. I like.
I'm personally very concerned with Dos Pueblos Charger Academy. I know San Marcos has a group, they want to call it an academy, and we basically told them at this point, no, don't call it an academy. It, the word academy just doesn't seem to fit to me. It just, I don't know. We have a lot of academies, but it just doesn't fit.
I would, my reaction to that, Mr. Heron, is that, I mean, it's borrowing the aura of academy, which can mean high-powered academic and so on. And that's why I'm talking about it being a nice new bottle. And let's, maybe that's where they're trying to go with this, and, and that would certainly be a step in the right direction.
Can the principal speak to the term, using the word academy, and maybe Mark? You've got academies on your campus, and are we deluding?
I appreciate all the name changes, and I recognize, you know, the concern of uniformity. But one of the things that we have to look at is that even in the programs, and I had this really great web, webinar today with small learning communities, and a lot of them are referring to the small learning communities as academies. It's, as Mr., or Dr. Noel says, it's quite a term that encompasses quite a few things. So, it doesn't necessarily have the, it has a different stigma than the word continuation does, which is what we found out after running these for a year on each of these campuses. That, that has a different connotation than the word academy, which seems to be much more acceptable and is much more inviting to the parents who have the kids in these programs. And that's what I would offer in Sean's case. Speaking for Sean, the academy is actually a, quite an appropriate name for that.
Mrs. Parker?
And I would just chime in that the concern that, that we had, I think, at San Marcos about that one new program was very different than this, which is actually a separate high school. This, in that case, it was, it's sort of an introductory year to see if this is something that they can get off the ground and, and not really fully ready for board approval as an academy. But I see this as a different situation, so I'm not worried about the name.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried unanimously.
Tell Norm he owes you one.
And let it be shown that we started, we waited for you.
Thank you.
Okay? We do get, as had a schedule sometime. Okay. Let's go to F, conference agenda eight. We're, what, we're 30 minutes early?
Yeah, I think we should, we could also skip to F4.
Yes, we could. Skip to F4. That would be a great item to skip to.
Okay.
No, let's, I want to go to F1. Let's get on with presentation of the fiscal crisis and management assistance team's evaluation of district's childhood development program.
Good. Eric Smith, our deputy superintendent, will introduce this.
I'm going to have a couple of comments, and then I'll turn it over to Robin Swawsky. As the board knows, on April 13th, the board retained the fiscal crisis management and assistance team to perform a comprehensive assessment of the various programs operated under the child development programs of the district. FICMAT was on site May 18th through May 20th and interviewed certificated classified and management staff regarding the various aspects of the program. Robin, do you want to say a few words?
Yes, just to frame it a bit. And I, I know that just most recently, we've had another report, or, or a comprehensive report from FICMAT. And I know the board knows what FICMAT reports are and what they aren't, but I just want to frame it just a bit, because FICMAT reports come in, when we ask them to come in and do an evaluation, it really is to find out what's not working well. And it's not about finding those pieces that are working well. They certainly find those along the way, but they don't focus on them, and they're not part of the report. And so, just today, I was meeting with one of our coordinators in the program, and I, I just need to say that the leadership that's been there really for the last seven years, has been leading the program, recognizes and was fully behind having the FICMAT evaluation conducted. Their heart and soul is in this program and wanting to improve it in any way they can. It's difficult to have something like this, you know, where the leadership is really pointed out. And so I just wanted to frame that, that, you know, their, their, what they've done is, the work has been valued, and they are open to working with us and with the FICMAT recommendations to improve the program. But I just wanted to say that ahead of time, and I know that our, our representative, Mary Barton, Barlow, excuse me, I always want to call you Barton. Mary Barlow from, from FICMAT is here to give the report, and she will answer lots of your questions. So, Mary?
Good evening, board, and thank you, Dr. Sarvis and administrative team. We enjoyed our visit here in Santa Barbara School Districts. We were impressed with the quality of the programs, with the cooperation of the staff, and with the outpouring of support from your community for your child development programs, including letters of support from the parents about the program services that are being delivered to children. It's very evident that your district has a long history of commitment to child development and the services that it provides to ready children to enter school. With that said, FICMAT has been, or was enacted under AB 1200 in 1992, and has served 700 school districts approximately with management assistance programs and fiscal services, similar to what we've done here today. So, we do operate in what Robin described as a deficit model. We come in and look specifically at the scope that the district has defined and make recommendations for improvement. Often, that's hard to hear. In this case, we had a pretty specific scope. It was very comprehensive. It covered 12 areas. I will discuss our scope and then highlight some recommendations that the FICMAT team found over our three-day visit, along with the review of all of the documents, which took several weeks. About 91 recommendations came out of this, this comprehensive review. So, just to begin, as Eric said, we were here from May 18th to 20th. We met with a variety of your educational team members. The commitment is evident. The scope of our services for this particular review was to analyze the organizational structure of the Child Development Department, looking at the number of programs, the size and complexity of the programs, and make recommendations for efficiency in terms of staffing and instructional and support personnel. We also wanted to look at the align, were asked to look at the alignment of the district's child development programs, HIPPE, CAL SAFE, and ACES, the after-school program. We evaluated revenue sources. We evaluated expenditure patterns, and we came up with cost center analysis. In addition to that, we looked at facilities, made recommendations on hours of operation, communication efficiencies between different departments, particularly personnel and payroll. We also looked at the job descriptions of the coordinator, administrator, and other team members, made recommendations based upon looking at similar-sized programs in other county offices and districts, and the memorandum of understanding with Child Nutrition Services and the, and the Santa Barbara Teachers Association contract. Okay, with that, I'm going to jump into kind of an overview and then go into the specifics by area. In 1909, or rather, 2003, when the director of the then-child development program retired, there was a decision to have two coordinators serve in the director role. Ideally, that, that would function well with one person being responsible for school-aged children, the other coordinator being responsible for other programs, preschool, that sort of thing. Your sites operate multiple types of programs, multiple funding sources, and it became very complicated very quickly with a number of people serving, both in a support and an administrative way, to organize those programs. So, in two, what further complicated this is in 2009, AB 2759 combined the funding sources of all of these programs, and in essence, created two programs, CSPP, which is your preschool program, and CCTR, which is your, your childcare program, for both infants and toddlers and school-aged children. With that, every district across the state and every county office operating childcare programs had to really evaluate the services that they were offering the children and think about which model fit them best, not only for the services that they could provide to the community, but to maximize the revenues to be able to, to still operate within the budget. And that is something that needs to be reviewed. What we found at the end of our assessment is, we're not real sure that that comprehensive review that was completed in such a way that it maximized the revenues for this district. And so you're trying to operate a program with reduced revenues from the state of California because of the budget crisis, with reduced grants from local granters and from program participants, and with a more confining funding structure under AB 2759. So, we believe that it is very important that the district go back and review the AB 2759 funding sources, take a look at every single child, find the best program for that child, and then determine whether or not that is, in fact, the best funding model for the district. So, that's a little bit of an overview. Okay, we're going to start with the organizational structure. Under organizational structure, we had 20 recommendations, I believe. We believe that the most important thing here is to redevelop a hierarchy, a clear organizational chain of command and line of authority within the department, so that everyone across districts and across programs and within departments understands who is responsible for which program. We believe that one director is the best way to approach that, rather than two coordinators, and that the two coordinator positions should be eliminated. FICMAT recommends that the district review and revise the job description for the director to reflect the new revised organization, chain of command, and line of authority. Eliminate the head teacher positions. It's outdated. It doesn't follow along with the CCTC or the CDE in Title V recommendations on alignment for childcare and preschool programs. We recommend that you create three to four site supervisor positions. We've provided sample job descriptions. Those site supervisors would actually provide the daily operational programs. So, in terms of staffing and personnel, that, that would be handled by each site supervisor, working with three to four different sites, understanding CSPP, CCTR, understanding the staffing ratios as required under Title V, understanding the educational requirements as required by CCTC, and really working to minimize use of substitutes and keeping that staffing ratio as required by Title V. That way, you're within budget. That person would really need to be, each site supervisor would be more advanced than the current, what you have as a site supervisor, but wouldn't necessarily, necessarily have to be at a coordinator level. They would directly report to the director, if that makes sense. Okay. The way that you organize your sites that each person would, would be in charge of, would be geographically located and according to ADA. So, you know, probably 300 to 400 students per site supervisor, three to four sites. We recommend that you ensure that each site employs a preschool teacher and at least one preschool assistant. And then really enforce the, the recommendations that adults, parents are involved in their child's education, that they volunteer in the classroom, and that meets your student-to-staff ratio of eight to one in the preschool classroom. For the full-day classroom, there is no requirement for parent participation, so you need another childcare aide. In some cases, many of your, your sites are operating with fewer than In some cases, many of your, your, your sites are operating with fewer than 24 to one students and they are operating with a higher student-to-teacher ratio. What I mean by that is maybe three children to, to one adult, so it's not cost-effective. Review your business off, the business office job descriptions and eliminate redundancy and redistribute duties, and assign those folks to, to the location. Right now, what's happening is they're all kind of centrally located, working with one another and going out to the site to support the sites, coordinators are going out to the sites to support the sites, and so, your parents have to come to that single site. Whereas, if each business office staff member was actually at the site, they would have the opportunity to directly help with enrollment, help with any critical clerical work that needs to be taken care of, and collect parent fees. In looking at the staffing ratio, there may be an opportunity to reduce one business office staff member from the child development program that's compared to other districts' similar-sized programs. And reassign and review teaching and assistant staffing to redistribute as needed, so that you have that student-to-child teacher ratio as identified under Title V, and we've given you the, the exact ratios per age group, because it changes. And then, more importantly, CCTC, California Credential, Commission on Teacher Credentialing, gives specific recommendations about the educational requirements for teachers, for assistants. And Santa Barbara School District has a great level of teachers and aides who have such high academic achievement and educational backgrounds, doctorates, masters. It's, it's remarkable. However, the, the program does not receive the funding that is generally measure it with the, with the salary that these kinds of educational levels attain. And so, we're, you're in a situation where you have to balance the desire to provide the very best, highly-educated person in the classroom, teaching a student, with the funding realities. So, there's some recommendations about that to, to revise the salary schedule as well. We recommend that you revise the organizational chart, so it displays the clear hierarchy and that it reflects the above changes. That's one through 11. There's an additional four or five recommendations. So, I'm going to move on. I know I'll need it and I didn't bring it. Thank you. Okay, so, moving on to program alignment. We took a look at the HIPPE, ACES, and CAL SAFE programs. HIPPE, which is a home instruction program for preschool youth and their parents, is a grant-funded program. It's operating within budget. Whenever there's a need to, whenever the budget is reduced, they make the programmatic changes. It, it's really not necessary, not necessary to change it. However, you might want to look at operating it in a nonprofit status with an outside nonprofit in partnership, because quite frequently, their salary schedule and benefits are less than school districts. That's just one of the thoughts. CAL SAFE and ACES are operating and functioning outside of the child development program, probably shouldn't be aligned under there. And we're recommending that you take a look at aligning some things within ACES, but not necessarily the organizational structure and, and enveloping CAL SAFE or ACES within, within the child development department. So, revise the job title of CAL SAFE coordinator to CAL SAFE site supervisor, that's along with CCTC. Transfer the oversight of the CAL SAFE program to Santa Barbara High School principal. That person is more involved and engaged with the CAL SAFE program and integrate it with alternative ed. Transfer the program oversight of the HIPPE. Anybody smiling? To the newly-developed director position of the child development department. Maintain oversight responsibilities of the ACES program with the associate superintendent and align the after-school goals for student achievement with the district's vision. Right now, they're not entirely aligned and that, some work needs to be completed in that area. And this is new. ACES is pushing in this direction, has been for the last year or two, and there's already some emerging things taking place in this district. It's just a direction that needs to be continued. Establish regular meetings with the ACES site coordinators and the school site principals to increase and improve communication about what can be done to more closely align what happens in the daytime to what happens in the after-school program, particularly around the area of enrichment and support for academic achievement. And establish regular meetings with, of the ACES director and the child development director to determine where programs are aligned and could benefit from sharing resources such as curriculum and enrichment materials. There are more recommendations. We think that if there was an adoption of research-based intervention and enrichment curriculum and instruction supplemental materials, that it could be used both in the child development after-school program as well as ACES. And in many cases, at the same school site, an after-school program under CCTR is operating and also a program under ACES is operating. In some cases, they're not operating at full enrollment, and so, there might be opportunities to look at how those two can align and, and really communicate with parents about which program's going to be best for them. Another thing we'll be talking about later on is CCTR. That funding is really volatile at the state level under the current budget. So, in any op, if there's any opportunity to move students who are currently being served under your CCTR, which is your, your childcare and after-school age program, into either ACES or CSPP, which is the preschool half and full day, it's really important to do that, or you may not have that opportunity to continue to operate that program. There's two contracts that need to be reviewed and looked at for opportunities to reduce costs. One is the Santa Barbara City Parks and Rec Department, and the other is the Family Service Agency contracts, because in some cases, it's more cost-effective to operate and employ those services directly with the district.
May I ask a question on that?
Sure.
I think one of the items I pulled from the consent calendar is the contract for family service agency. Have you looked at that contract and would you recommend we review it?
I haven't looked at the contract that's currently on your agenda. We looked at the contract that was part of the, that was last year's contract, essentially, and we felt like there was an opportunity to review the shared cost, particularly the indirect cost, and there, there might be some opportunities to reduce the cost to the district for those services.
Thank you.
Okay, so, moving on to revenue enhancement. I should probably give you page numbers that I'm looking at. Page 29. So, again, we want, we recommend that you review all programs through the lens of AB 2759 and the potential loss of the CCTR funding. And, two things happened. There was a decrease by the, a 1% decrease in funding for CSPP contracts and CCTR contracts in 2010 and 11. It will be imposed, so that needs to be budgeted for. The second thing is the general childcare program funding, again, it's more volatile. The May revise proposes to eliminate all Prop 98 funding for childcare programs commencing in 10/11. General childcare in particular would be cut by 84% from current levels. Additional cuts would also be imposed in the form of reimbursement and eligibility criteria changes, so the higher percent of poverty would be required to be eligible. And it's anticipated the state will continue to place a higher priority on the state preschool program, which is CSPP, than on general childcare, and that's because that has an educational component, again, asking school districts to really focus on having those children prepared and ready to learn when they enter kindergarten. So, looking through the AB 2759, 759, 2759 lens and understanding that, in fact, this, this funding is volatile, really requires looking at each and every child in the program and seeing how many can actually be served by CSPP half-day and full-day or ACES. So, eliminating CCTR, or reducing it as much as possible. Particularly on page 29, then, we give you a whole list of grantors and, and opportunities to enhance revenues, but three things I want to point out. Number 13, review the feasibility and potential revenue of participating in MAH billing. I know that's really begun here, but you're providing tremendous amount of Medi-Cal outreach and assistance to these families, and if they're eligible, your activities, all your activities are eligible for reimbursement. And it's really critical that you use an outside agent to assist with the billing and the timed surveys and all of, meeting the requirements at the federal level to, to maximize your funding. But particularly the ACES program, anybody providing special services to special-needs students and preschool are, are very eligible for that. CAL SAFE in particular. Maximize the grants through student enrollment and accurate reporting and maximize the collection fee from parents, and we talk about that a little bit later. There's, there's some issues with collecting parent fees. So, there's some internal controls issues and then also, there's a, a loss of revenue, because from time to time, you know, it may be that you need to go back and, and do a second collection. So, let's go on to page 31, expenditure reduction. There's some areas that, particularly reorganizing the department, looking at your staffing. We gave you a recommendation for how that staff should be reorganized, and then taking a look at each and every program that's operated and staffing one teacher, one aide, you know, and then particularly in the full-day program, a childcare aide. Realigning those positions with the CCTC and the Title V education requirements, which means that, later in the, in the discussion, we're looking at recommending that you take a look at the salary schedule and redefine it and align it with those lower requirements, which takes negotiation with, with both unions. So, the recommendations on that page, if you will, to reduce your expenditures and bring it in line with what the Cal, state of California is providing for a budget, is that you look at reducing the consultant contract for budget development and reassign those, those duties to a district staff member. Potentially hire a district accountant who works directly with the department, understands all the program funding requirements, because those program funding requirements are extensive and complex and changing every year. Seek cost reductions in the food services by reducing overages, negotiating costs for meal and snack, and properly accounting for, you know, how many students will be there and, and need to be fed that day. So, there's some, some changes, tightening up of that ship that can really help reduce that cost. Negotiating contracts to reflect a calendar that is aligned to the program serves. The program is not paying for unnecessary time and days. In addition to that, sometimes, there's a lot of staff in the morning and the afternoon, and maybe there are fewer students during that time. So, kind of really closely aligning the operational hours or the staff hours to operational hours. The big one, negotiating the salary schedule to align with the required qualifications for the positions needed. Again, it's fabulous, it's, it's been a real wonderful thing to have these highly-educated people in the classroom, working with, you know, infants, toddlers, and, and preschoolers. But at the end of the day, if you do not receive the budget, that, to, to pay their salary, it, you're not able to continue to offer those services to students. So, it's something that needs to be looked at. Staffing at the Title V allowed ratio of children to staff. Again, alternatives should be sought to meet child supervision ratios through part-time employment, volunteer parents, so there's some opportunities there. Then we gave you some cost center analysis, and I'm not going to go through that page by page, but the particular area that we were not able to go to it and, and look at it site by site, because that's not how the budget is defined. So, what we did is look at it by resource code. And there's a couple areas of concern, primarily substitutes and extra hours, extra duty hours that accounts for about 150,000 of the $263,000 deficit that occurred last year. And that, in most cases, if the program was operating according to Title V requirements, you can, if a teacher is absent and an aide carries a certain, a particular title, which is the assistant teacher, that aide can serve as the teacher, another aide can serve as the aide, the parent can serve as the aide. You don't need to hire a substitute, you've reduced your costs. You could also redistribute children when there's multiple preschool programs operating on the same site, again, avoiding the sub-costs. So, there's some ways to look at that and operate it a little more efficiently. And I think if you have three to four site supervisors who are operating daily with three to four sites, they're more likely to be able to, to take care of that, and that's why we recommended the organization that we recommend. So, on page 51, how am I doing for time? Getting close.
You're getting close, yes.
Okay. On page 51, we have recommendations for the multi-year fiscal solvency plan and, and some other issues there. We think there needs to be some systematic processes developed for program monitoring that includes the program requirements, program timelines, and a checkoff sheet. So, it's just uniform and very understandable and, and someone can very quickly assess how each site is doing. Are they understaffed? Are they overstaffed? Do we need to make programmatic shifts, that sort of thing? Consider terminating the contract with the outside consultant, again, and returning that fiscal oversight programs, the child to the district office business staff. Again, potentially hiring the accountant. That would work with the district office at the site, but directly on this particular program budget. Tracking the budgeting, the monthly budget monitoring, fiscal reporting to CDE, contracts, negotiation, it, it's pretty complex. Consider hiring the one FTE accountant. Appoint a senior member of the cabinet or designate to learn the detailed fiscal and regulatory operational functions of the program. It is, it is really complex. And most of these programs that we, when we talk to other districts and county offices, they have senior members who, this is what they do, all day, every day. Yeah, it, it's, it's very complex, it's a big commitment. And by the way, Santa Barbara has one of the largest child development programs operated by a district across the state. So, it, it's not a small task that you've undertaken. Develop a process and a timeline for personnel actions and communicate that process with the child development and other departments. There just, you know, seems to be some, some underlying miscommunication and departments not really understanding everything that goes into a staffing change and negotiating with the union. And particularly, if there's a reduction in force, it's very complex. Attorneys are involved, negotiations are required, there's a specific timeline that needs to be followed, and the people who are undertaking that process need to understand that. You can't just make a simple decision and it comes to the board, there's a very complex process involved. So, let's move to page 53, employment calendars. In particular, in 53 through 55, classified staff and certificated staff work anywhere from three hours to eight hours and everything in between. There's not a lot of uniformity by site, by job title, you know, by position. There's just not a lot of uniformity there and that needs to be tightened up. In addition to that, because people are, are operating in two different sites, in two different part-time jobs, they're now eligible for benefits. And what that means to the district is a significant investment, additional investment in cost for medical benefits, long-term benefits, and OPEB, post-employment benefits. And so, that needs to be factored into the budget. And FICMAT made some recommendations. As you move forward with making these changes, review the program hours of operation and student attendance, again, at the beginning and the end of the day. Stagger the staff shifts according to student attendance. Hire substitutes when the ratios cannot be met by combining some of the children. Align the hours of operation. Develop a policy to require district office approval before hiring staff if the additional hours or position would result in eligibility for benefits. That is a significant portion of the cost. Okay? I know it's hard to do. It's a difficult decision, but it is something that impacts your ability to continue to serve children. And number seven is negotiate employment calendars and salary schedules for child development certificated personnel that align with the needs of the program they serve. Okay, job descriptions, I'm, I'm getting closer to the end. We recommend the elimination of the coordinator and head teacher job descriptions. Develop a job description for site supervisor, align it to the, the CDE matrix, and include a site supervisor permit as a minimum requirement. Additional education should be added as deemed necessary by the district, but not necessarily to the current level of BA and above. Revised teacher job description to include education such as an associate of arts degree and align the salary schedule to begin at the associate of arts degree rather than a bachelor of arts degree. Assign the site supervisor to several sites based on proximity to reduce travel. Assign the site supervisor to several sites based on proximity to reduce travel. I think I've already covered the MOU, so I'm going to skip ahead to review of documents, the Santa Barbara Teachers Association and other documents. Consider implementing a lower first step that begins with a children-centered teacher permit and an associate of arts degree rather than a bachelor's degree. We've given you salary schedules, we've given you job descriptions, and we've provided the organizational charts of comparison districts. And in the case of Santa Barbara, we just might mention that the top salary is where the hugest discrepancy, the biggest discrepancy would be. And as a matter of fact, it's approximately, the next highest salary is approximately seventy-five percent of Santa Barbara's top salary. So there's where the rub is. Align salaries to the CCTC or CCTC permit matrix, hire teachers with permits. Place higher educated staff members in the CSPP program because there's a required core educational program there rather than CCTR. Again, develop those new job descriptions aligning with CCTC and the CDE. And begin the negotiations process with the Santa Barbara Teachers Association. So finally, there were some additional considerations. There's, in the ACES program, there's about approximately eighty-five thousand, one hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars a year of cash handling, parent fees that are collected by family advocates, and there's a commitment to get that done and to follow the process and procedures that have been put in place. However, there are some additional internal controls that need to be put in place, some tightening that would really provide some security for both the person who's handling the cash and the district. It's a lot of cash to be handling, and so we recommend that perhaps the internal auditor be involved in auditing that, your own internal auditor on an annual basis, that systems are developed for the secure handling of cash and checks and to ensure that the internal controls continue, include a systems of checks and balances. That pretty much summarizes briefly what you have in front of you, and I'll take any questions now and do my best to answer them.
Wow. That's a lot to go through. Comments, Mrs. Parker?
Thank you. This is an incredible report and one that clearly was long overdue, unfortunately. I appreciate what Mrs. Sawaski, how she framed the way this conversation started because I know that we all do appreciate the great work that's been going on in the child development program, but I think I can see why this would be very hard to see, especially for leaders in that program. It was hard on us because we knew how hard it was on teachers and families in March when we gave out so many pink slips to the child development teachers and to those coordinators. But reviewing through this, we can kind of see now how we ended up in the position where we suddenly needed to make so many possible cuts. I do have just a few quick questions for you. One is Harding School, which has sort of an unusual situation right now with an outside funder that's brought in, it's funding a sort of a unique program there for preschool-age children. And obviously, that grant has a finite term. It has, they have their own site preschool director at this point. Did you, I don't see any discussion of Harding in here beyond being, where it's aligned under a specific site coordinator or site supervisor. But did you consider how that should fit in with the district or look at that at all?
That's a good question. First of all, that particular piece of information came up after we arrived at the district and is outside the scope of work, but we did have some subcomments that weren't necessarily contained in the report. The Harding program, because it's completely grant-funded, can operate outside of the umbrella of the child development program. It should align with and work collaboratively in terms of the curriculum and the instructional program that's offered. However, if programs that are funded under CSPP or CCTR are operating there, the district will still need to remain deeply involved in the staffing ratios of those programs and the credentialing requirements and job descriptions for those teachers. Because if the staffing ratios are lower at Harding than they are at other districts or at other district sites, that affects your funding, your overall contract for CSPP and CCTR. And so all district sites would suffer the consequences of that lower student-to-teacher ratio.
Okay. I do just want to note that although I think it's a great idea and I hope that we implement many, many of these recommendations, but putting site supervisors on sites, I'm sure that they're going to be, just space issues that are going to be a little bit of a challenge. So that will be something that we need to look at. I think my biggest question is, I know that there's so many recommendations in here that hopefully will contain costs for us in the long run. But starting off at the beginning with the organizational structure, the recommended organizational structure, it was hard for me to estimate how the costs of that new organizational structure would compare to our current costs. And I don't know if you have, because there's, you know, there's a director instead of two coordinators, there's a new, you know, site supervisors here and fewer teachers there. Do you have a sense of how that would compare?
That would depend on the job description and the salary schedule that's negotiated for the new positions and the ability of the district to align the salaries, the current salary schedule with the educational requirements as outlined by the CCTC and Title V. Now, if you take a look at the actual positions, we are recommending a slight reduction, but it depends upon, again, the number of sites that are operating and the number of programs at each site. Increasing the number of students who are served at each site, in some sites it's fifteen, in some sites it's twenty-one, but really it should be about twenty-four in preschool, CSPP, and twenty-eight in school-age children centers. So there's ratios that are defined in there. Generally speaking, the coordinator positions, two coordinator positions, one director position, you're going to see a little reduction there, some revenue savings. The head teachers would be eliminated, site supervisors, I, you know, wouldn't want to presume to start negotiating what they would be paid, but we provided comparable salaries in here for you. Site supervisors at sites, there really is quite a bit of, there's space available that we observed at sites that would be able to house both the supervisor and a support staff member. And by doing that, the site supervisor can then serve as the other co-located adult. And so it actually reduces the cost for your current support staff that you, that are in place. There's a reduction in support staff, reduction in the consultant contract that would be balanced out by an accountant if, you know, the district needed to hire someone rather than envelop that into the current duties of the business office, the district business office. But the actual estimated savings is something the district would have to, you know, pencil out.
Okay, thank you. And I just want to make a last comment as a parent in this district on your point about lack of communication and sometimes miscommunication in that at one point this past year, I did go into my elementary school site to ask about the kids' care program or after-school childcare program for one of my children. And I was, I didn't expect the school office necessarily to know if there was space available, although that would have been nice. But they literally had no information at all about a program that was operating on, not even, not a flyer, not a phone number to call beyond call the district office. And I was startled by that. And so there's lots of room for improvement.
There always is in any program.
Other comments, Dr. Noel?
I thought I had read my last FICMAT report last year.
My apologies.
And I really don't thank you for, at that level. When I get beyond that, I really thought it was thorough. It was really quintessentially FICMAT, although you did not anywhere near come close to the one hundred and fifty-three recommendations from the last one. So for that, I applaud you.
Thank you.
One of the problems we, I have one particular, and then I want to talk more in general. And this really goes to something that you had just said. You said there's kind of a trade-off, a couple, two points, I guess. I learned today that the consultant costs about forty thousand a year. You're not going to get an accountant for the district office for forty thousand, including benefits. So there's probably another forty has to be added to that. I'm looking at this organization chart on page fifteen where it has director of child development and then under the director, site supervisors, but at the district office, two positions, administrative assistant and office coordinator. And as I look through, I made a point of trying to find more about the administrative position, assistant and office coordinator at the district level. And all I could find was on page seventeen in the recommendations, number seven, assign one administrative support position to the same location as the director to provide the director with support. I didn't really find a job description for that except the ones you have attached from, mostly from county offices. And I especially didn't find anything about the office coordinator. And in some sense, the documentation doesn't really support that position that shows on there. And I would love to eliminate any boxes on that particular chart because every box costs us a lot of money.
Yeah. My take on this is we're trying to retain the current job titles. Those job titles can be changed, but the current job titles in the current org chart, identified administrative assistants and office coordinator and then support staff, basically. And what we're saying, what FICMAT is saying is that there is a senior office assistant, which is the title that's used for the other support staff, needed at each site, to support the site administrator, rather. Collect those parent fees, communicate with the parents, provide the daily clerical support that's necessary to the site administrator, the site supervisor, rather, at the director of child development level. And that person can be located at your current business office or you can reuse that site for another purpose and locate your director at the district office, whatever works best within your organization. There will need to be two administrative support personnel to work directly with them to complete the reports that are necessary for the CDE, to continue to maximize your funding for CSPP and CCTR, to align and work on supporting that, aligning that curriculum. And so the clerical types of duties, if you look at the clerical support of Kern County Superintendent of Schools and the other comparable program staff, Bexhill City School District, it's about the same. That's where the number of staff.
Yeah, we have two coordinators now, and this is three at the central coordinating position. But what I'd missed, and perhaps I didn't read carefully enough in those county office job descriptions, I missed any detailing out of the function particularly of this office coordinator box, and I would hope that we would be able to do that.
Perhaps we can clarify that. We're talking about clerical positions here. Like we have in a school office.
See, the last FICMAT report, we got bam, three senior administrative positions.
Yeah, these would not.
And we filled them and before we had really, well, in my opinion, a debate whether we needed three. And I want, and I guess I'm carrying the scars of that as I look at this, so I wanted to look at it carefully. Let me go on to the bigger, other points. I mean, I, the unmistakable large impression is that organizationally, this is fragmented operation and that it has to be brought under district control. And that, to me, you know, if you grant that, then a lot of things follow. A lot of battles also follow, probably. And I think we have to be well aware of the consequences. The other one, another big point you make is, I see, extremely difficult in that, I mean, you're basically telling us that within this operation, there's a tendency to, for people to be, for many staff to be overpaid and overqualified. And put that bluntly, that's a tough message, and that's going to be a very tough thing to resolve. And I'm not, I'm just saying, I'm really kind of thinking about the agenda that the district faces in this and the challenges. In many ways, this is going to be much more difficult, I think, than the last FICMAT report when it comes to implementation. Another huge message I get, and it's not so big in your report, oh, you certainly put it there, but I get it all from reports on the ground here in the district, that our after-school programs don't, are not aligned with our academic goals. And you say that in here, and I hear that, and I think I've heard that, you know, and others have probably heard it as well. To me, that's a very big issue and a very big challenge, and I certainly don't have solutions off the top of my head for it. But I would, I would think that that would be perhaps less controversial than the other two points I mentioned, but much more fundamental to what we're trying to do in the district to align everything with our academic goals and our academic mission. Let me just glance over my notes and I'll be quiet. Never, I'll never be quiet. Yeah, basically, my bottom line is our challenge, and not yours, our challenge is, can we figure a much more effective, more decisive, quicker method of implementing these recommendations?
Yes. Mrs. Diggan?
I'll second that. I'd first just like to start by acknowledging the dedication and hard work of our staff because while we know their problems, that doesn't diminish what they do day in and day out. So I just want to thank them and let them know that that is appreciated. And I certainly share with Dr. Noel this mixed feelings about recommending less qualified teachers. I, maybe through attrition or something along those lines, but, and we can look at that further. We all focused on the organizational chart, and I'll just ask a couple of questions. One starts there. When I counted up the number of support administrator and support staff, what we currently have, there were eight. And when I count up the number recommended in this organizational chart, there are nine. And since I'm thinking we're trying to reduce numbers, does that assume that perhaps existing teachers take on the site supervisor position?
Well, there's two things. One is that that's completely up to the district. Once the job descriptions are developed and people apply, that natural shift will occur and there will be attrition, not only in the teaching ranks, but potentially even in the business office and staff ranks. What we have is a recommendation to take two coordinators and eliminate that position, create one director. Head teachers eliminate that position and create site supervisors, which are lower than coordinators. Similar to head teachers, but a little bit different in that they're more involved with the daily program operations, financial budget monitoring, staffing monitoring, student-to-staff ratio monitoring, requirements. So really more technical in nature and the, that's an elimination of staff. The senior office staff, there are three recommended here, there are four on the org chart. There's a subcaller that was not included in this particular new org chart, so that position was also recommended to be eliminated. So in essence, then, the reduction in staff also occurs at the school sites or at the program level with fewer teachers needed and fewer administrative aides. And there's a lot of different titles for them, instructional aide, instructional assistant, childcare aide, childcare assistant. We've kind of aligned that by recommendation with the CCTC and the CDE matrix, so it'll become very, very clear. And so the actual comparable program staffing reduces from your current, or we recommend that you reduce it from your current staffing ratio to a new number. Now, Now, we also kind of stated in here that that depends upon accurate counts at the program site. So really, some reflection and count of each student at each site will be required to determine the staffing level at each site. And one more thing I forgot to add that I really think is important is that some sites have three programs that operate in the morning and one program that operates in the afternoon. If you were able to change that a little bit, you could consolidate the programs into fewer classrooms and have to maintain fewer classrooms, and you could probably take a look at your custodial contracts and your contracts with janitors, housekeepers, if you will, and eliminate those positions as well.
Thank you. Actually, I saw that, but I was wondering if those times are not dependent on parent work schedules, so I don't know if you can necessarily shift mornings and afternoons. A couple other things, and this is a big-picture piece, and it's taken me a long time to really wrap my head around what we do in our child development program, and so this report was really helpful in that regard. And I certainly came away with the feeling we probably have way too many things going on at the same time. You've talked a little bit about blending ACES and CCTR, and I understand that the CCTR funding is volatile. But is there the potential to blend those programs so that we just have one program? And I understand the funding streams are different, and it might involve different record-keeping, or more involved record-keeping, but it seems that then we could capture that uniformity of the curricular piece that we think would be useful. And so I'm just wondering if physically you could actually just blend those two, or is that too difficult?
There are different requirements under both programs, and that needs to be addressed. There's a potential to blend it, but it would be more at the program level in terms of ensuring that the types of staff that you have operating the program have the same type of requirements. ACES operates with paraprofessionals. School-age childcare, CCTR operates with teachers, with credentials in the classroom in many cases. And so, you know, you have a more highly qualified person, and so kind of aligning those two, those two things is really important. Aligning the support and the curriculum and those types of materials is really important. The communication needs to be better developed because there might be opportunities for, if CCTR is eliminated at the state level, there might be opportunities for the district to apply for additional ACES sites because it's based at each site, and there's a certain number of students that can, are allowed at each site based upon elementary and middle school. And so you can open up more opportunity to serve those children in the ACES program.
Right.
So, but in terms of physical location and blending in that manner, that's going to be a real challenge and not advisable.
Okay, thank you. And then just two last pieces, one's on the nutrition recommendations. I did have a chance to talk to our Director of Nutrition Services today, and she had some ideas about a different federal program. It's the Child and Adult Food Services Program that she felt would be much more cost-effective than the way it's being done now. And I personally would not want to move away from what our wellness policy has already set in place in terms of healthy food, and they're using plates that can be composted and all that. And if we went to an outside cheaper vendor, I'm afraid we would lose all those benefits. So I'm very cautious about that. And just the last piece is about CalSafe. From what I gathered, you're talking about making it maybe kind of a stand-alone program outside the two other programs, but in fact, there is a childcare component to that.
Absolutely.
So are you running then a separate childcare piece for that?
No. In fact, we believe that the whole program should continue to operate as it is now, but rather than being under the direction of the Child Development Director, to actually be through the Santa Barbara High School Principal, because that person is providing all the support, all the connection, all the interaction necessary in the direct supervision, and has been for some time, and has the proper credentialing to evaluate the teaching staff and other members who are operating the CalSafe program. It's operating within budget, but as you know, that is in Tier Three, so there's still, you know, there's some potential for movement. And as the report states, the childcare component is probably going to be safer under this new May revise than the parent support piece, which is in fact becoming volatile. So just keep an eye on that. We feel like it's more an alternative ed program directly related to children, you know, students at the high school level. And because it's such a small program and kind of isolated at this site, it's probably best to work directly with that principal.
Mrs. Cudelo.
Well, I'll try to be somewhat brief because I think a number of my concerns have already been addressed. But first of all, I do want to say thank you very much for the thoroughness of this report. I think, like everybody else has said, I feel like I understand our child development programs so much better after having read this and understand sort of the connections and distinctions between them. And I also want to acknowledge our staff and our teachers, et cetera, because one of the things that I think, you know, we don't necessarily see in this report because it wasn't what the report was about, was the great work that is being done and the way that we are serving the children in this community. And so it's sort of unfortunate that just by the nature of the beast, this report focuses, as you prefaced your remarks with, on the things that we need to be improving. And as a result, that's what we're all talking about when, in fact, there's so many things that are wonderful, and I think the community as a whole appreciates all the work that's being done. So thank you to our staff, and I want to make sure that we're aware of that. And one of the things that I think is going to be difficult, and Dr. Noel, I think you've touched on this too, is that so much of this touches on staffing and changing people's job titles, changing people's job descriptions, changing their level of pay. And I noticed that Dr. Caprito looked a little surprised at the idea of what some of his new responsibilities might be.
He wouldn't get any more pay, though.
And he wouldn't get paid anymore.
No.
We're kind of like the state in that regard, right? We add, yeah, we add mandates, but no additional funding. So I think it's going to, I think this is going to be a really difficult set of recommendations to go through. And I think as we do that, we really are going to have to be very cognizant of the fact that we're, that we are dealing with people in their positions. But I also think that some of those things also reflect some, like Ms. Deacon was saying, some of our values in terms of maybe we aren't, maybe we're doing a little bit higher level or than what is absolutely required, but it may reflect something that we think is very important. So these are going to be, I think, a little bit tricky to deal with, but I really appreciate the level of thoroughness that went into this because at least we know what we're working with. So thank you.
I agree with almost everything said, but I think the one glowing thing that wasn't said, and it needs to be said, I don't think the staff of the program in general, they're doing a great job, as everybody said, but the report very clearly says we have a district leadership problem. Time and time again, it's in there. We haven't done our job as a board and as district leader. We haven't done our job, pure and simple. What is the role of the Associate Superintendent of Education in your job description? She's the, that position is the top, how much time should it be taking for that person to do that job?
It is, it's so complex, and it takes so much time to really understand the entire operations. It would require a good portion of, if you chose to continue that under Robyn's leadership, a good portion of her time to become familiar with all of the programs, all of the operations, review AB 2759. This is a big, big piece of the job. And so generally, when a program is operating effectively and efficiently outside of district operation, we don't worry about it because it is operating within budget and it's producing the goals. You know, it's doing what we're asking it to do. When it comes to our attention that there's a deficit or something's not working, that's when we go in and take a look at leadership one step down, generally, and the whole program, and find out what's the issue. What we've got here is a situation that was exacerbated by the California State Budget Crisis and by AB 2759, and now by the May revise, which might in fact reduce CCTR funding by 84%. So those things are making all districts, you're not the only district. There's a lot of districts and county offices out there that had to stop and completely reassess and reevaluate. And it's not uncommon, and we go to a lot of districts, FICMAT, that's what, when we're called in, is when an issue is identified by the district office, and they say, wait a minute, there's something that's not working here, let's come in and do a review and find out what we need to do to correct it.
If we had a strong director, would that take?
It would have probably been reviewed and looked at earlier, and probably 2759 would have been implemented a little more effectively for you.
So a choice would be to get a good director, that would take the burden off the Associate Superintendent.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Because the way we get complained about is we're not going to hire more administrative people, but Mrs. Waskey can't do everything.
No. You need a full-time person who can understand this program from beginning to N, A to Z, all the different complexities of it. It's a huge program that you're operating here. And looking at comparable-sized districts, there is a director-level administrator, which is a high-level administrator above your two current coordinators, who understands all the bargaining unit, you know.
Okay, I get it.
You got it.
I get it. We have two public comments.
Thank you very much. We'll take our public comments now. Lane Wheeler, followed by Edna Trujillo.
Lane Wheeler, Santa Barbara Teachers Association. Thank you for allowing me to speak this evening. I'd like to thank the board for their wisdom in commissioning this FICMAT study. I think you've been highly vindicated with the presentation that you received and acknowledging that there is a program that's in disarray and it needs to have its house put in order. I'd like to thank Mr. Smith for his leadership in moving this process ahead as quickly as it can, could be moved. And I'd also like to thank FICMAT for the thoroughness of the report. I think without giving a lesson on our estate, you all realize that the kind of boom and bust economy or economic cycles that we've gone through have oftentimes fostered the development of new programs as one legislator or another decided they wanted a program named after them, and they've thrown that out there, oftentimes funded, many times not. And we have taken that on and said, let's do, hippie, let's do CalSafe, let's do one more program, without any articulation of how those programs are going to overlay. And we get that, you know, once again, an onion with many, many layers, lots of complexities. As Rob and I have talked about many times, the level of requirements for these programs is oftentimes much more complex than what we find in our elementary and high schools. And we know how thick those rules and regulations are. So once again, we have a flawed model, but one of the most concerning things I heard out of this report was, let's take those folks that have been making this program work, the heart and soul of this program, our teachers, and I'm not speaking for the other association, but oftentimes the aides and the housekeepers that have been there, to make this program work, to connect with those folks. We all know that the many reports that come out that said, get kids early and get them educated and fluent, and then connect with them and keep connecting with them, and that's what child development does. It has those connections. I've been in program, I taught in the program 30 years ago. I didn't acknowledge that I was that old, but I am that old. But I still know kids from the days of teaching in childcare, and those programs have really come a long way. They are no longer just, let's socialize, let's develop language, but now they are academic programs, whether they be at the Waterford Lab or in the classrooms. And they're also oftentimes that bridge, that connection that keeps kids out of gangs because of those after-school programs. And now we're asking those folks that are doing that wonderful work to be paid less.
Thirty seconds.
I have a problem with that. Please look at the job description for a site supervisor. It requires a driver's license and a valid child development site supervisor permit. I'm not sure that that's the person we want leading sites. We look very much forward to the implementation plan and being a partner in a progressive movement here. We do have some concerns, and we hope to have them addressed in the future. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Wheeler. Edna Trujillo.
Hello. I just came, you know, from now on, when I come to the board, I will be as a public commenter because I don't work anymore for the child development, but I'm still in the same field. I work for Transition House, and I am the Infant and Toilet Director at the program. So this document has served me as a piece of research for my administration online class, and I found a lot of good things that I am going to use to write my paper. So, but I would like to expose my opinion about the, you know, from the teacher's point of view. And one thing that was interesting for me is that I found out in the paper that the way that the coordinators were managing the personnel situations with the staff is going to be revised and is going to be changed, which I'm very happy because that's something that has to be done. And also, as a family advocate, I will, I never found in the paper anything about the philosophy and the practices that a program like this has to follow. And there was more like Financial Director rather than, this is child development, and we're talking about younger children. So I think all the changes that are made has to be, have to be directed completely with the core of the program, which is, this is not an academic program. You can, you know, include academic component, but if I compare with the program that Harding is going to run, don't think that because you put a lot of academic instruction, the children are going to do better. You know, there are a lot of things that involve the child development, and I think that's something that I didn't find in the paper. And about the ratios, you know, I read that there were proof that there was overstaffing. The safety, you know, is, that's why the licensee puts certain ratios because of safety issues. So I think that's important, always the safety. The qualifications for the teachers, we live in Santa Barbara, and we have.
Thirty seconds.
We have, you know, children that come from really poor backgrounds and very wealthy backgrounds, and I think having high-qualified teachers are really important to instruct this population. And you talk in the document about the needs of the population. So I think the teachers that are in the program are what the program needs. I think that's pretty much it. I, that's it, okay?
Thank you, Mr. Trujillo.
Back to the board for more discussion. Anyone? Okay, we'll take a 10-minute break and come back at 9:30. Look, Mrs. Uribe.
Members of the board, Dr. Sarvis is with a little bit of hesitation, but with a grateful heart that I stayed in front of you tonight. My name is Lourdes Uribe, and I've been, I've been here to the board meetings a few times before tonight. And the reason why I'm here again tonight is to share some insights about how we can provide a better education to all of our children. And I get very grateful to Dr. Sarvis and the Board of Education for allowing me this opportunity, a little more than three minutes. I was. opportunity, a little more than three minutes, I was thinking five, and I got ten minutes, so you're going to be, we're going to be moving fast tonight. I hope it is okay with the board and with Dr. Sarvis, as a part of my presentation, that I introduce you to my, to my daughter, and she's going to take a minute or two to present herself.
Hi, my name is Georgina Uribe, and I wanted to take this opportunity to thank my counselor at Dos Pueblos High School, her name was Jane Tucker, she was with DP for a while, and she did a really good job in her career there. I was sitting there reading your mission statement and it really hit me how well she fit the criteria, she did everything that you expect her to do and more. I'd just like to give some examples of what she did for me. I went from having serious illness my freshman year, I had migraines and I was sick every day, and I was barely able to get up to go to school, so I hardly got any credit my freshman year. And then she helped me get through all my classes, I ended up graduating with a four-point-o and I got about $10,000 in scholarships, academic scholarships, and she also supported me while I was there. We were able to beat Buena for the first time ever with my soccer team, and that was really cool and really exciting. And I also wanted to tell you that even though I got a really good education, I, also made me really sad that my brothers weren't able to. They've always been in the special education program, and I just wanted to ask you to support the people and the voices that support our kids, the kids in our community that will end up being our future. And then also please help the student and the student athletes that can't play, they're not always in special education, but they're usually forgotten because they can't understand the material that they're required to learn, and they end up, they have tremendous talent and just because they don't meet like the two-point-o requirement, they can't play and they can't get scholarships to go to college and they end up dropping out. So I just wanted to ask you to help them. And the counselors help both the children in the special education program and also those that aren't, they just help all the students. And I want to thank you for everything you've done and ask you to please not sacrifice their special services because of budget cuts. Thank you.
As I told you, I like to read a lot of books and I read a book by a doctor. I'm very good at using materials that I, my husband is going to present to you something that I believe is useful. I've been to a few of the last board meetings and it is really exciting to me to feel and to see the interest and the, and the courage and the heart that I feeling in this, in these meetings for the last few months. I don't see a board member here that is, that I don't feel in my heart, and I must confess that this, this has not always been the case. When I first, at an IP meeting about ten or twelve years ago, out of frustration, I asked the principal at my elementary school, is there anybody else that I could go and talk about getting services and education for my children? I was told that there was such a thing as Board of Education and that they meet downtown, and also I was told that, don't go because a couple of those, a couple of those board members don't like very much Latinos. This is what I was told by a teacher and a principal. Again, I'm very glad that that happened in the past because I came with, with a scary heart and I found out that Ruth Green and Fred Rifkin became advocates for kids that need, that need the most help. So I'm grateful for the Board of Education, I'm grateful for, again, Bob Noel, I'm grateful for Ms. Cordero for teaching our students at City College how to become self-sufficient, and I am grateful for the new, I only, I'm not sure if I'm right, but I know Ms. Deacon, I relate Ms. Deacon with the pool at DP for some reason, so I go to DP and I see the pool and I think of Ms. Deacon, the new president of the board. I was here when you were presented and you came with a, with a desire to help and do your job. I am grateful to Mr. Sarvis, Dr. Sarvis for his years of trying to do a very difficult job. Again, it is my desire that we can, again, work together to educate our children, all of our children. I, I mean, talks with Dr. Miller, I believe in compensatory education, whatever that means, and I like to stress to you the fact that I'm a, we are an honest family, you know, we are here to educate our children. I went in Mexico to school ever since I remember, as a little girl coming to first grade in Mexico, I remember knowing that the way to get out of poverty was to get an education. I thought for a reason that it was going to be easier here in the United States, and it's been not the case for, for the most part with my family, but I'm grateful to have a daughter that is courageous enough to come and support me, and I'm grateful for your time and your dedication to helping all the students. I will beg you to somehow, is there such a thing as you having an influence and settling the cases for my two students so they can go and get an education? He didn't want me to do this, but I have with me my son, his name is Jorge Uribe, and I'm going to ask him to stand so you can know, well, I'm sure you can know because the other one is my husband, he is Jorge Uribe, he's twenty-three years old, and he came to special education when there was probably not such a thing as a special education with kids with, with this, with this medical and educational challenges. I'm grateful for your time and again, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Uribe. Any point comment? No. We'll go to F3, discussion of staffing ratios in ninth grade English and math.
Before we move on, can we just, can the board have a comment on what she said?
Oh, yes, any comments?
I just wanted to thank Ms. Uribe for, Mrs. Uribe, for the comments that you made and for the obvious interest and effort that you've put into your family's education and your children. So I, we typically don't respond to presentations to the board, so I think you're aware of that, but I wanted to just acknowledge that we appreciate the comments that you've made.
Thank you. Last February, when the decision was made to increase class sizes in the secondary schools, one of the things that probably wasn't fully considered was the fact that we still had class size reduction in two different configurations in ninth grade English and ninth grade math. As I lay out in the chronology in the board agenda item, in April of 2008, the board adopted our fiscal recovery plan and included in that plan was a recommendation to eliminate ninth grade class size reduction for math. In November 4th of 2008, the voters of the secondary district passed Measure H, which among other things restored ninth grade math. Subsequent or somewhere in between, I'm not sure, we're going to have a discussion about this, the board also took an action to increase ninth grade class size English to twenty-five to one. It's always been interpreted by district office as well as, I believe, site administration staff at the secondary schools, at the high schools, that basically they were both, one was supposed to be twenty to one, the other's supposed to be twenty-five to one, and now I'm hearing that that might not be the case, and so we're bringing it forward here. Obviously, the high school principals would like to see more flexibility with respect to increasing class sizes in ninth grade English and math since all other subject matters are increasing. However, I'm also finding out serendipitously that maybe our understanding in terms of being at twenty to one might not be correct. So at this point, I'm looking for board feedback on it. I know that Mark Caprito's here, he's pretty much was the catalyst in terms of bringing this forward, and I'm sure he'd like to impart his knowledge about this as well.
Dr. Caprito.
The, a couple of things have happened, and I just, the general point of this, we have staffing ratios that we were obliged to meet at thirty-five to one, and we pretty much met those last year. But we were all operating on the twenty-five to one in English, and what Eric and I were both talking about is that we probably were operating at a different level of English because we were having all ninth grade English when in fact we probably only needed ninth grade prep programs at English and not all. So there's, there's going to be a slight change there, I think, for all of us this year at each of the three high schools. However, the other configuration was the math at twenty to one, and when you calculate our staffing ratios at thirty-five to one, and this is a double-edged sword for me because I've got, you know, I've got staff on one side and I've got administration on the other, but the facts are what they are, we're being staffed at thirty-five to one and now we're finding out, difficult to staff at thirty-five to one but fund at, and fund at thirty-five to one but staff truly at the twenty to one ratio, because what we calculated was only part of the overage of the ninth grade math. We didn't really consider the fact, for example, that Santa Barbara High School will have twenty-two ninth grade sections in math, at different levels of math. And so what we've tried to do is balance out the math and look at anything over fifty percent would be calculated at a lower rate and if it, at all possible. So we have ninth grade algebra, ninth grade algebra A, we have geometry A, some algebra II classes even have ninth graders in them, but we've got those kids up a little bit higher, so you can see the balance that we're having to create. So what we're trying to find, and I know all of us have been working on this, is what kind of a balance can we have that will allow two things to happen? One is probably have to have an increase in the class size to accommodate these, and that's, that's the other side that probably isn't the safest place to be because we have staff people that we have to look after. But on the other hand, we have administrative responsibilities too where the staffing issues are just what they are. So we're sort of in an impasse, and I think Eric brings to the table is what was the original decision that was to be made and how can we best make it fit all of the high schools so that they're fairly uniform in this process this year? Currently, we're about eighty-four percent staffed with our master schedule, which is a really good place to be right now, it's as, it's as good as we've ever been. But we still have staff A in math, staff B in math, staff C in math, and staff D, because I've lost six math teachers in two years and we haven't hired anybody back, but we still have lower class size. So as the class sizes get smaller, the numbers of sections get larger, my people keep disappearing and we keep bringing back temps. So we really need to look at this as a whole big picture, and this may not be the form, but it's something that needs to be addressed, probably in the pretty near future. We have about a month.
I was going to say.
So it's strange, but this is essentially where we are.
Mrs. Parker.
There are a number of things that have surprised me around this conversation in terms of, I think, people talking, miscommunication and sort of different remembrances of the I was really surprised to hear that the math class sizes were at twenty to one because I had understood from our previous conversations, even when we were going to twenty-five to one in English, you know, we did ask at the time, what about math? And I had heard, well, we try to match math. Because when I think of Measure H, when Measure H was coming forward, we had already cut math, we knew we were in a bad situation and, you know, increased the class sizes dramatically in math. We, we knew that we were in a bad fiscal situation in coming years and that class size would be looked at again. And so I don't remember, and maybe Mr. Hetian can pull up the Measure H language, but I don't, I don't remember it saying that it would restore ninth grade class size reduction. I thought it said that it would restore smaller class sizes in ninth grade English and math. Does it say? It says restored ninth grade class size reduction?
No, it says restore math class size.
Class size reduction, okay.
I don't know that English was the issue because the board elected English.
English had not been cut.
Right.
English had not been cut, but we had thought about it.
Yeah, absolutely. Actually, they were both recommended, I believe, and the board went halfway that year.
Right, we settled on twenty-five.
That was the second year.
Oh, okay, all right.
Because I had felt-
Can you tell I lived through all this?
I had felt that when, when I was having this discussion about the language around Measure H, restoring math class size reduction, that we deliberately didn't put in twenty-to-one.
There's no reference to it.
Because, and, and, or Morgan Hart or ninth grade class size reduction in that language because we didn't want to tie in, we already have it here.
I, I think I understand the nexus how we got there because I think what happened is we eliminated it when it was at twenty to one. We had that intervening year where English was increased to twenty-five to one, and then the parcel tax passed, and I think in all our minds, restoration means restoration to the way it was in the baseline, but it was never explicitly stated anywhere.
To me, it meant, and one of the reasons why we kept, we protected smaller class sizes in English at twenty-five was so that they could match. That is completely the way I was thinking, although clearly not articulating. And to me, smaller class sizes in ninth grade math and English are very important, and I, you know, there's a suggestion to go above twenty-five to one, and I would not support that. I was just startled that it's at twenty to one for math. I think twenty-five to one is reasonable, having a match math, English and ninth grade class size reduction, but larger than that, I feel like that really would be detrimental to students and also not, not honoring the voters' beliefs and requests when they, you know, cast their vote. I'd always understood as a board member that ninth grade math class size reduction was for algebra and geometry only. Never heard anything about, you know, if you're in algebra II, you're sort of moving beyond the system anyway.
We don't, and I would speculate that all three high schools are in the same boat. There, the numbers of ninth grade math kids that are mixed with other ninth grade math kids are, is pretty small. They're usually with tenth and eleventh graders, so it's not really been an issue.
Uh-huh.
I don't know that we had a section, but I will share that we did max out at twenty-two. We, it was fairly difficult to try to even attempt at twenty, but we were at, we were at twenty-two.
We were at twenty-two, yeah, that makes a little bit more sense. So I just, I'll just lay out that I think twenty-five to one is perfectly reasonable in math, to have it match, match the English class size reduction. I'm, I personally would not support going beyond that.
Dr. Noel.
I, I wanted to make a distinction, I do want to make a distinction, distinction between which math.
Right.
And we now have the eighth grade algebra exam, and we have increasing numbers taking algebra, Algebra I in eighth grade, and my focus ended up thinking about the people who didn't take algebra in junior high school. And I looked at, I looked it up and in 2009, just using Starr data, the, the numbers of students, there were something like sixty percent of the eighth grade class district-wide took Algebra I in eighth grade, and about nineteen point seven percent or three hundred and fifteen students didn't take it until ninth grade. And of those, interestingly, about half of them are disadvantaged Latinos. And, and my inclination is to, whatever the number, and I wouldn't quarrel with Mrs. Parker's twenty-five to one, but whatever the number, my inclination is to not apply it to kids who are taking Algebra I in ninth grade but have the smaller size for them. And I don't know, you're the master scheduler, whether that's a viable distinction in, in practice, but I would like to identify those kids and make those, those classes small. Algebra I is such a gateway class and they need all the help they can get.
Well, keep in mind that we have, in addition to Algebra I, we have a three semester algebra course, so you would be looking at Algebra I, then an Algebra A of the three semester course. Because the Algebra A kids are really not ready yet for a two semester algebra class. It will take them three, three semesters to complete, and that's the student who will also transfer to a three semester geometry class and then finish with the potential to take an intermediate algebra and Algebra II as a senior.
Yeah.
And still have an opportunity for college.
I would say that, another word, ninth grade geometry, twenty-five to one, ninth grade- I, I would say that, another, ninth grade geometry, twenty-five to one, ninth grade, certainly Algebra II, twenty-five to one. But those, the kids are struggling. I need the smaller classes, I saw, in my, my opinion.
Is, is there, if, if you're looking at twenty-five to one for geometry, what would a, a number look like for you then, Dr. Noel, for algebra?
Algebra I?
Yeah.
Algebra I in ninth grade?
Yes.
At twenty.
Okay.
And I, I even, I added it up. I, I used the twenty-eight, and it came out to a difference of four classes, four, four, four separate classes. It was just, at the price of, of four extra classes, offering a smaller class size for the kids who are still struggling in al, with Algebra I in the ninth grade, I thought was well worth it. That was using twenty-eight. That would be probably five, six classes for twenty, it was twenty-five to one. You have to do the math.
I just want to be clear that the Morgan Hart class size reduction F Ts are pretty limited in nature in terms of how they were allocated to each three, and then anything that falls outside of Morgan Hart would be subject to what's in the collective bargaining agreement. And basically, we have a four now, twenty-five to one, and so basically, you would have to staff somewhere between twenty-five to one and thirty-five to one. So that's an issue. There's a, there's, I'm just bringing that to everybody's attention.
Mrs. Deacon.
This is the first time I heard that, it sounds like you were making a calculation about ninth graders in other math classes and proportionately reducing those. Did I hear you write about that, other than algebra and geometry?
Yeah, we, we try to, and I, I will agree, probably most of us would agree, that the ninth grader in Algebra II does not require a class size that's twenty to twenty-two to one. They're, they're pretty far, they're pretty ahead. However, we do have a lot of struggling ninth graders, and we still have some tenth graders who have not passed algebra. I mean, this is a, it's a pretty serious problem. But the ninth graders are the ones that we're dealing with. So consequently, we have offered the ninth grade class, we have, you know, twenty-two sections of ninth grade math, twenty-two sections of ninth graders. Now, they're not all taking math at that level, of course. And I, you know, we have to go back and check the numbers. But we do have, at our school, a significant number of kids in a geometry B class, for example, but they would be tenth graders, because they've had to go through the algebra sequence and get to a B. We also have several kids who will be taking Algebra A and Algebra I. It's just, it's just the way they fall out. We look at CST scores and teacher recommendation, and it's highly likely of the, I think, Dr. Noel, you said something like sixty percent, may not, not all those kids come with a recommendation to move on to the algebra class. That's what we found, is that the algebra classes at the junior high, it's not the same algebra class at the high school. And it is such a foundation class that what our teachers are wondering is, and we see a lot of kids who struggle with Algebra II after they take geometry, simply because they don't have the foundation. So it is a calculation, it's a, it's a risk, but we're looking at low CST scores and teacher recommendation and prior grades. Keep in mind that we're always a year behind.
Okay. And actually, I was talking about ninth graders taking tenth grade math classes, and, and, did you say that you were actually looking at the numbers of ninth graders, say, in, in Algebra III, IV?
Yeah, we do. We have to. Yeah, and, and that's not calculated in our mix. Those kids don't calculate at all. We're really looking at algebra-
So you're not reducing those class sizes because there's ninth graders in them?
No, we're not.
Okay, all right. I'm sorry, because I thought that's what you, and I'm a little disturbed if I'm hearing that our eighth graders are not prepared after taking algebra in the eighth grade, because they should be equivalent classes. But, but getting back to, to the main points here, I certainly could live with twenty-five to one in ninth grade math across the board, actually. To me, as a teacher, I don't, personally, five more students, I don't think makes a huge difference in terms of your, your teaching load. Not every student is there every day, you know, there's, there's students who stop coming, unfortunately. But, so that would just be my guidance was, it was also my understanding when we dropped English to twenty-five, that it was to make it comparable with math. So I, I could live with the twenty-five to one in math, but not twenty-eight. Thanks.
I guess the question up there is, what does restoring ninth grade math class size mean?
Well, exactly, because my question, I had, in April of two thousand eight, when we, it says, that your, the cover letter says that we adopted the first phase of the district's fiscal solvency plan. Included in that plan was an action to increase ninth grade English classes to an average of twenty-five to one, and to use state funding to do that, basically. So what I don't understand is if, if we had proposed, and, and maybe I'm, maybe I'm misremembering this, but we had proposed to raise it to twenty-five to one, and then with Measure H, Measure, I, H, we said we were going to restore the class size reduction, then having it at twenty-five to one doesn't seem like it would be restoring a reduction. Am I, am I making sense?
Yeah, the elimination was math, because you have to offer English prior to math. That's the sequence in terms of getting state funding. So both programs encroached, and I can't remember right off the top of my head, but I want to say somewhere like a hundred and ninety-eight thousand or a hundred and fifty thousand each. And so basically, by eliminating math, we had a net general fund savings of a hundred and fifty thousand because we no longer had the encroachment. Then the following year, we increased English to twenty-five to one in lieu of, so it was a partial, in lieu of eliminating English and getting the full savings of the reduction and encroachment. And this is where I get a little hazy in terms of when the parcel tax actually pit, actually passed, and looking back, would that have contemplated restoration to twenty-five to one or twenty to one?
Well, I guess that was, that's my question too. Maybe it's all of our question.
But I'm kind of liking Board Member Parker and Deacon's recollection.
When I, when we eliminated class size reduction for math,
Yes.
What did it go to? What did the class size become?
Well, and, and that's, that's another overarching issue, because class size in all subject matters were much lower, too. So that's another issue.
I guess because my concern is in honoring the intent of Measure H. I don't think restoring the class size to what it was when Measure H passed is restoring a reduction. I think it has to be lower.
No, but it was not, Mrs. Cordero, it was not at twenty-five to one. It was at thirty, it went to contract.
Yeah, it went to contract.
It went to contract.
That's correct. It would default to contract.
Okay.
And, and contract at that point was hard cap at thirty-five.
Right.
Was it thirty?
Thirty-five.
Thirty, or thirty-five, thirty-five?
Thirty-five.
It was a hard cap at thirty-five.
Hard cap thirty-five.
And it was, that, that was the default when it went away. And then I think Measure H came in just after that, because I don't believe we had a year where math was at thirty-five.
We did have a-
What, you, you, I'm sorry, could you say that again?
I, I, I have to be honest here. I don't think we had a math year. I, I don't think we had a year where math was at thirty-five. I think that, my recollection is, the recommendation was to eliminate both, English and math. English stayed sometime between that time and the time of the next school year, Measure H passed, because we didn't have a year where we had math at thirty-five, and I don't recall a year ever where we've had a math here at thirty-five.
But-
But you would have.
But you would have.
Mrs. Parker?
If H failed, we would have.
You would have had to, because the parcel tax didn't pass till, we, we cut math in April. The tax passed in November, wasn't collected till the following summer.
Exactly. That's right.
So if there, if you didn't go to thirty-five to one, then you were probably spending site funds-
Well, we probably bottomed down with categorical-
To buy them down.
Yeah.
So I'll, I'll leave that for a moment, but I do have one more thing I want to chime in to, to. I just wanted to chime in on, on Dr. Noel's comment about twenty to one in the algebra, because you had twenty to one in algebra for years and years, all of our district high schools have. And if we were looking for that to be a solution to algebra, to students passing algebra, it's completely failed. Twenty to one is not the answer for ninth grade algebra. And I want us to keep that in mind. It may be that smaller class sizes, I, I know that smaller class sizes can have an effect, depending on how the teacher uses it, depending on the population. In our ninth grade algebra classes, it's, it's not working as it is. It may be that they need even smaller class sizes. It may be that they need ten to one or fifteen to one in order to be successful. But I, I just want to be careful, because I think that we all know that, that general research shows that often class size isn't as effective, or smaller class sizes, at least at that number, at twenty to one, are not, are not always effective in improving student pass rates or understanding. But what we get, when we were having discussion around English in particular, and I think it's true for math as well, that for ninth graders coming in to large comprehensive high schools, that they need extra support and some smaller class sizes in order to make connections with their school and connections with particular teachers. And there's no question that smaller class sizes and fewer student contacts mean that teachers can spend more time with students. And so that's why I think it's important to keep smaller class sizes, but like Mrs. Deacon, I, you know, I think the difference between twenty twenty-five is not dramatic. Thirty-five is huge. But I really respect what Mrs. Cordero was saying about, you know, what is voter intent. I honestly think that this is a conversation for the oversight committee, and not, not necessarily for us, because I think that it's going to be hard for us to judge that.
Well, and, and one of the reasons we brought it here is because the oversight committee won't meet till like September.
Okay.
And so, yeah, and it for staffing.
It would seem to me that, that staff and any board members who want to go back and review the tapes or review the documentation, we're not going to make a decision here, so we can talk all night. But you got to feel, but I think somebody has to tell me, because I wasn't on the board, what restoring ninth grade math class sizes means, because that's what the oversight committee will ask. And so somebody's going to have to give the oversight committee background information. They're not going to sit there and make up their own mind without facts.
Yeah, it's, it's going to be difficult because of the, as, as Eric offered, it really is a matter of timing, because if, if restoration happened before the vote to move English to twenty-five, then you've got a, one, one issue. If it happened afterwards, then you've got another, another issue.
Mrs. Cordero.
Well, is part of the issue also determining what we consider ninth grade math?
Well, I'm-
Because are we talking about different, I mean, I, what I thought I heard you saying, and, and maybe, maybe I misunderstood you, is that the ratio may be being applied to classes, to more classes than it needs to be applied to. And so maybe while honoring the size, we all, we still need to be looking at which of the classes we're going to apply it to.
Yeah, we've, we, and I, and I'm, I don't know, I can't speak for all the high schools, but I can speak for, for ours. We look at algebra and geometry, because we, those are the two, they're real critical at that, at that stage. And I think for, you know, reasons that were brought up, also because of the fact that, you know, while academic achievement may not be the number one criteria in secondary schools for lower class size, there are a host of other reasons to have lower class sizes that also help. And it's not always about classroom achievement. It, it doesn't always have to be about that. So we were really looking at geometry, seldom, I, we, I don't, you know, you're not going to have enough kids that, with a schedule where they just have one ninth grade Algebra II class. It's just not going to happen. And so it's not a concern. We wouldn't do it anyway. So we're really trying to focus on a number, I think, that Mr. Herron is suggesting, is what, what actually can we settle with so that we can go back to our schools and finish this master schedule and find out, do we really have staff A, B, C, and D or not? That's, that's going to be important for us.
Well, it's, no, I'm just, because it seems to me that you've got to make a decision, and then it's got to be supported by the oversight committee.
Yeah, well, we know the dates of the actions. We can go back and look at the tapes, so.
Okay. Anything further, Dr. Noel?
I would like to take a little exception to what Mr. Parker said about size. The general findings is that class size doesn't matter, but that's when it's not disaggregated. And that, and that I think the research is pretty solid, that, that smaller classes, just the same thing where smaller schools benefit socio-economically disadvantaged and minority students more than they benefit, more affluent, affluent students. And in fact, like, when it comes to diverse, large curricula in large schools tend to, to benefit the more affluent students. So you have, you know, you have a choice to make. But I think it is, and, and Mr. Parker said it, that the, it's a question of connections, and the opportunity for teachers to connect more with small class sizes, and the disadvantaged kids benefit disproportionately from the connections.
Good. Okay. Let's move on, and we're going to leave it to staff and come back or make a decision. I'm not sure which. F four, first reading of board policies, administrative regulations of three thousand.
I'm sorry. I didn't see the speaker slip. We had one public comment on-
I'll show up when I'm supposed to.
On F three. Thank you, Mr. Wheeler.
Just one comment, and that would be that I, the intention of that whole conversation was restore the class size, the class size that we were restoring, I believe was twenty to one. So I will add that to the conversation for your thought, as I think you mentioned, Mr. Herron, the decision won't come from tonight's discussion, but I, I believe that was the intention. We do have language bargained on a minimum size to run a class with, at twenty-five to one. I'm not sure that we discussed that in our negotiations based on this, but maybe something comes back to the table.
I, I, I think I can respond to that. So in the bargaining language, my recollection is, class size is funded by categoricals, which Morgan Hart or parcel taxes are excluded.
Right, right. And that there is no class size reduction language for ninth grade math or English. In the contract, there is for K three, so, which says we were back to the contract, so more gray area.
Okay.
Back to the tapes.
Okay, we'll go to first reading of board policies and regulations in the three thousand series. I guess first, my, my first question is, do we have a lot of comments on these from, so let's just start with Mrs. Parker, and you tell us if you have something that you have in your mind. We'll just go right down the table.
I, of course, didn't stick my sticky notes on here, so it's a little bit difficult for me, but the only, the only, I just had one really minor question, and that was, there's a reference to changing the number of, the amount of the insurance coverage for an employee, and I can't remember which section, which board policy number it is, but it's one where instead of having like two million dollars in coverage for criminal acts, in, in terms of money handling, that it would be two hundred and fifty thousand dollars instead. And I just wanted to check with you on that, Mr. Smith.
Oh, where are we at?
Yeah, sorry. Sorry I didn't put my tags on here.
Well, let's look for that one then.
I can look for it as, as we go through.
Yeah, I, I, I will tell you that-
Sorry, here it is. It's on three thousand and one, page two of three. The dispersing officer shall be included in the comprehensive crime liability coverage in the amount of, instead, it used to be two million, and now it's two hundred and fifty thousand. And I just wanted a little clarification on that.
I know that when we got a rider to our insurance policy for our dispersing agent, since we're fiscally accountable, fiscally accountable, we had to go to SISC, and, and that's how we got this, what's the policy called, criminal something. So what I need to do is just to make sure that that's all they would underwrite for us. And that's what my assumption is, but I'll verify that.
Okay, Dr. Noel.
May I comment on BP thirty-one hundred?
Yes.
I'm looking about the middle of the page, budget development process. In order to provide guidance in the development of the budget, the board shall annually establish budget priorities based on identified district needs and goals and unrealistic projections of available funds. Next paragraph, the superintendent or designated shall oversee the preparation of- Next paragraph, the superintendent or designee shall oversee the preparation of proposed budget for approval by the board, et cetera. What I, I would like to insert something for approval by the board, and the insert would go there. And it's an effort to try to, I'm trying to find language that explicitly links the budget expenditures to the priorities. And I've always felt that that is all, is quite vague, and doesn't, we don't really provide the guidance. And I can't, for example, it came up recently in our discussion of gang prevention and intervention, and I think we all agree that's a very high priority, but somehow that doesn't gets translated. And I, so I come up with language like this, okay? The superintendent or designee shall oversee the preparation of a proposed district budget for approval by the board that explicitly aligns projected expenditures with board-established priorities, period. And then just make a new sentence out of, the superintendent shall involve appropriate staff in the development of the projections. But that explicitly aligns projected expenditures with board-established priorities.
Mrs. Cordero?
Would, Dr. Noel, would you be willing to either eliminate or soften the word explicitly?
I'd like something, but I know what you mean. When I say it, that sounds tough.
I'm just afraid that we, it could cause some difficulty in trying to make, in interpreting what that means.
Do you have any suggestions?
Even, maybe even just the word specific.
Where would you put that?
I'm sorry, could you restate your statement that you added?
The board, that, I left it out now, that aligns projected expenditures with board-established priorities, and that's.
That would be fine with me.
Yeah. I'd like, I wish there was something that would move it a little bit more towards specificity, but I don't want to make a complicated statement.
That was what I was suggesting, that specifically aligns.
Okay, let's put it specifically. And then the next, I simply made a new sentence, cross out and, the superintendent shall involve appropriate staff in the development of budget projections.
Can you read what the sentence will be with your change, Dr. Noel?
Yes. The superintendent or designee shall oversee the preparation of a proposed district budget for approval by the board that specifically aligns projected expenditures with board-established priorities. And it's just the paragraph above that references the established priorities.
Mr. Smith, is any comments on that?
No, I mean, the only thing that jumps out at me when I read all these policies, they're all written like as if you had money to do anything with. Because really, it doesn't follow our process now, because we're not truly establishing priorities to enhance programs, although I think it's a good thing to have in there. I'm just saying, we're in bizarro world right now, so.
Mrs. Deacon?
But even as you make cuts, you're keeping in mind priorities.
Yeah, on the priorities. That's correct.
One way or another.
That's correct.
And we've had, this conversation has come up through the years over and over again, and I just kind of move us a little bit in that direction.
I know there's a lot of rhetoric about protecting the core, but I think it's always implied that we've tried to protect the core without explicitly, you know, stating that, so.
Mrs. Parker?
No, I just want to say that I support what you've come up with there, Dr. Noel. I think that's a nice clarification, sort of.
Do you have others, Dr. Noel?
No.
Okay, Mrs. Deacon?
Well, actually, I have others, not this particular one, although I think Mrs. Cordero was going to.
Do you have comments on this one?
Talk about the lang, just that sentence.
I was going to have a grammatical comment in that, where we've placed it as a misplaced modifier, because we've placed it after board. So I think we should be saying a district budget that specifically aligns, et cetera, in order for it to modify budget.
Moving for approval by the board.
Right. That needs to come after budget.
Okay. Mrs. Deacon?
My comments involve policies that are farther along, if that's okay. AR thirty-four twenty, debt management, page three of four, under refunding. It's just, it should be debt instead of department, or.
Under refunding?
Right, the district will consider refunding debt. It's just a typo, but I'll just point that out.
In the refunding paragraph on page three of four.
The district, under refunding, the district will consider refunding debt. Okay.
I don't see, I don't have three of four.
Okay.
And then my other comments had to do with the replaced AR thirty-five fifty-four.
You got it.
On page two of three, under the heading Additional Requirements for Schools Participating in the National School Lunch or Breakfast Program. And I'm not sure how much of this we are locked into by these codes, but I, I'm a little confused about these numbered items, one through seven and then one through four. Are we really requiring student organizations to only sell one food item? I mean, they can't sell two different things or three different things. I'm on page two, sorry, I know, I moved quickly. I'm on page two of three, under Administrative Regulation thirty-five fifty-four. And then the subhead is Additional Requirements for Schools Participating in the National School Lunch or Breakfast Program. But then there's some numbered items, one through seven and one through four. And those numbered items say, we will not permit sale of foods except when all of the following conditions are met, so they have to meet all of these. And the first thing that caught my attention was only selling.
That's title five. That's correct, that's title five.
So that, okay, so then is number six really right? The food has to be a dessert type food? Such as pastry or ice cream?
You know, I actually remember seeing that.
Yes.
I think that is right, but it is kind of funny.
Is that right? So they can't sell like cheese or something? I mean.
Let us go back and look at that, but it is kind of.
Okay, some cultures think of cheese as dessert. Miss Pa? Okay.
But it does give you the or fruit. It gives you the opt-out.
Right, it just seems onerous to me. I'm sorry, it's so micromanaging, but if we could just review that, okay.
Mrs. Cordero?
Most of mine were sort of grammatical quibbles, if you will, so I think I'll just leave them at that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mrs. Parker?
There is actually one more that I had, and that's Board Policy thirty-five ten, under the new policy under green school operations. And there's a whole list of such strategies may include but not be limited to, in terms of creating greener school environments. And number nine is providing fresh, unprocessed, organic food in the district's food services program. And because it's not possible to buy the quantity of organic food that would be needed to, you know, fully go organic in any school district, you can't even do it at a school with 250 kids, I would suggest that we add in languages, providing fresh, unprocessed, and organic when possible, food in the district's food services program, just so that we aren't setting up expectations that are completely impossible.
I just have one in AR thirty-five fifteen point two, it's just a question. It's new, the very first sentence, under disruptions, AR thirty-five fifteen dash point two. It says, the principal or designee may direct any person, except a student, a school employee, or other person, to leave school grounds if, just take number one, the principal has a reasonable basis of concluding the person's committed, committing or has entered the campus with the purpose of committing an act which is likely to interfere with the peaceful conduct. It seems strange, even if a student comes on, or a school employee comes on and wants to interfere with peaceful contact, does it say the principal can't do anything about it? Are there other remedies for the teacher, for the principal to do something with a student, a school employee, or other person whose job, you know, gardener? If they start doing something.
I think they do have other remedies. Basically, this is to deal with outside, you know, intruders. And so. Right. And then basically, they would have their own internal remedies in the district to deal with anybody who's an employee or a student. So I remember there was a lot of controversy when the AG came out with this opinion, which basically prohibited, you know, like reporters from coming on campus because they would cause disruptions, and I think the policy is set up to deal with that kind of issue.
Any others? Okay, that's the first reading.
Good, thank you, board.
And just as a, I know, I don't, I'm not sure how many more of these we have to go through, but it sure helps when somebody numbers each page, so we can say specifically. Okay, G, consent calendar items. The first one was D three, real quick. I guess I just wonder why we need to send five people to Florida to our institute in Read One Eighty for a cost of 10, $11,000.
Excuse me.
And four from Cleveland, four from one school. Why Orlando, Florida?
This is where the National Institute is. Actually, our district is being honored, and a lot, and some of our people are actually presenting. And this is the national conference, so this is where those teachers who are leaders in Read One Eighty are going to help present, and then also to take advantage of all of the training. Sometimes it happens across the other side of the country.
But at some point, we need to say, hey, do we really need to go out of state to be honored? I mean.
Oh, well, and it's also the, we need the training. It's not just to be honored. We don't need all those people to be honored, but we're going, because that is where the training is.
We don't have training in California, or we don't have staff that can do training now after a year?
Not to this degree. We do have some, I mean, they're learning some of that. Again, this particular funding can't be used for anything but training as well. And I know we're not trying to be wasteful at all. I mean, we're trying to be very frugal. People are sharing rooms, in some cases, flying, yeah.
It just seems strange to spend $8,000 for four people for one school, but, okay.
May I ask, Mrs. Swasky, that's just district title two, or?
Absolutely, yes.
Or is it site title two?
Well, the district brings in the title two.
So are you holding all the title two at the site, or at the district office?
This last year, we held it all because we had a liability with our math training. We had teachers that are gaining their 80 hours of additional portfolio work, and so as a liability, each one of those is entitled to the $1,250 that they would receive when that's completed. And so as a liability, we had to hold that. This year, we've already allocated to the sites chunks of money for training that specifically aligned to our LEAP and the single plans, and you'll see that. You, actually, you'll be approving those allocations in that way to the sites.
Okay, thank you.
Dr. Noel?
I want to agree with Mr. Herron. I mean, I was an academic, and I went off to conferences a lot, but I understand that for 10, for $11,000, you could add a thousand bucks a day, you can get a pretty good consultant to come in and give it here. And I wonder if we ought to be looking at those kinds of trade-offs as we evaluate these requests for out-of-state travel for particular kinds of training.
Mrs. Cordero?
Well, I'll just move to approve item D three.
I'll second, and I just want to add that we ask so much of our teachers that I think these are the kinds of opportunities that really reward them in ways that we can't reward them in other ways, and that they grow as teachers. And so, you know, if we have the opportunity to give them this, that I think it's, we, the whole district benefits.
We are so short of money, we need so much training. If it was one each from five schools, where they can come back and train their school, but four from one school, you know, if they're going to come back and train other students and other teachers at the school, it just seemed going, in this day and age, of going out of the state for training, when like Dr. Noel says, for $11,000, we can do an awful lot of training right here. It's just something to think about. It's not business as usual. Was there a second? Yes, Mrs. Deacon. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No. Motion passes three to two. Noel and Herron dissenting. D six, this is the one that has, well, Dr. Noel pulled it, so I'll let Dr. Noel. I was going to.
I pulled it for the same reason that I just, I wanted to hear some discussion about the appropriateness of acting on this now, or whether this should be put into a context of that FICMAT comments about the relationship, whether we should be reviewing it before we approve it. I don't even know what the deadlines are on this. Is this something we have to run away?
Actually, Cleveland School starts on Thursday, and their family advocate is poised and ready to go to function in that program and beyond. They really support the school. I believe that in light of the FICMAT report, we do need to review that. I talked to Debbie Badger here after the FICMAT report was given. I think we need to look at that, we need to look at the contracts, you know, all of these.
Could we just fund the Cleveland person and then put this on an agenda for a review in the context of the FICMAT report?
I might suggest a shorter time period. I doubt that between now and our next board meeting and what, the way we implement and look at the FICMAT report, the other schools would then be starting. And day one, they have their family advocates there to run the program. So if we want to do something different, I would suggest having a shorter period.
For next year.
Or next year, but a shorter period on the contract. It's a six-month contract instead.
Is it six-month? Oh, okay.
This is for the whole academic year.
Do you want to recommend?
That makes good sense.
Make it a six-month contract? Do you want to make the motion?
Is that possible?
Six-month? Yes, we can make that possible.
I move to adopt this with a six-month contract.
For half the amount, or?
Yes, yes, we would, whatever, we'll figure out the month. It's probably, it's probably a 10-month, yes, it'll be half the year. We'll figure out what that is and half the amount.
Half.
Half the amount.
My motion is for half.
Half the amount, okay.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carried, five zero. On D eighteen, I pulled D eighteen. I had one question, and then maybe a comment, but number one, I'm happy that the validation is part of it, but if I read this correctly, the validation is $5,000, and the legal fees for the rest is about $9,000. So really, the fiscal aspect is like $14,000 instead of the $9,400. It's $14,400, is that correct? So I think this should be changed to 14,400. So I'll move that the, it be approved with the estimated at a maximum of 14,400.
Can I ask a question? The funding source is the Mad Foundation loan, correct? So are they prepared? The way I read this, you had not included the validation cost.
Right, that was an error on my part. The total should have been 14,400.
Oh, so you intended to include the validation?
Mr. Herron caught the error.
Okay. I thought you were offering the validation piece up as an option.
Yeah, we do want to do the validation, and we intend to do the validation.
Any, I think we had a motion and a second, right? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Mrs. Cordero, you pulled D twenty-one.
I just had a question about two of the items listed on the questionnaire. I just had a question about two of the items listed on the questionnaire. 18 is especially awkward to me because I'm not sure what the, what that's intended to determine. I guess an assessment, a self-assessment always makes me think that you're going to assess whether it was good or bad. And this one, I don't know what the answers would tell us. They don't clearly tell us good or bad. So I'm don't, I would be happy to eliminate it, but if somebody feels strongly about that topic and wants to change the wording, I think it needs to be a little bit clearer.
Mrs. Deacon?
I'm not, I don't have any strong feelings on actually the content of this one, although I think that, I'm not sure if things have to necessarily be good or bad. They might just be topics for discussion to elicit sentiment regarding them, but like I said, I don't have a strong...
Yeah.
Mrs. Parker?
I would agree with Mrs. Cordero that this is one where I just don't see it as being as helpful as most of the other questions are. And so I'd be perfectly happy with eliminating that particular question.
The other one that I feel the same way about is number 24. I'm not sure what the answer to that tells us. If it does, what does that mean? And if it doesn't, what does that mean? I just, so I would just, I guess I would move that we had to approve item 21, D21, the Board Educational Self-Survey Form, with the elimination of...
This is not an action item.
Well...
Is it? Oh, yes it is. I'm sorry, God. Yes, it is.
With the elimination of eight, number 18 and number 24.
May I ask you a question, Mrs. Cordero?
Yes.
And Mrs. Parker? On 18, my problem with 18 is it's compound. And so you don't know what the answer is, part one or part two. I think part one is not bad if you leave it alone. The Board often questions administrative proposals. I mean, the other one is, we don't tell our superintendent, "Go back to the drawing boards, Mr. Superintendent."
Well, I don't have any objection to it. I don't, I think having just the first step would at least make it clear.
Yeah, and these are all perception questions. I mean, these are all, the respondent's perception. Well, I would...
Okay, then, I would be willing to modify my motion to say, to approve the self-assessment questionnaire with the elimination of item number 24 and the revision to item 18.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Okay. I think that was all of them. Oh, Mrs. Deacon.
I actually forgot to pull something, and so I would like to move that we reconsider D11, and it is timely, otherwise I would not...
I second the motion to reconsider.
Thank you.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. We will reconsider D11.
Okay. On Board Bylaws, it's BB 9220. Moment to get there. Governing Board Elections is the topic. It's the first page, one of two, so it's Board Bylaws 9220. At the bottom, there are two numbered items, and as I read the second item, it occurred to me that we may actually not say what we intend to say. This has to do with the fact the district pays for up to, I think, a quarter page of the candidate's statement in the voter guide, but what it actually says is notification of the district policy that the district will pay the Elections Division so that no candidate requesting a candidate's statement in the Voters' Guide will have to pay a cost for the ballot statement exceeding one quarter of a page in the guide. So if you take this literally, it means we would pay for everything over one quarter. No, I don't, I think we pay for the first quarter. We don't pay for everything after the first quarter. I had to pay...
The intention, the intention is that, say there are only two candidates, so we only have two-quarter-page statements, well, the elections will charge for the full page, so they'll charge each candidate for half the page, so the district was going to pay the remaining quarter. Now, we have a problem, however. Go ahead.
Well, a candidate could choose to write a longer statement, and the way this is worded, if their statement was, say, two pages, we're going to pay for everything exceeding one-quarter page. It says, "No candidates will have to pay for anything exceeding one-quarter page."
May I suggest that we simply check with the elections, and if that is the case, we do not want to pay for any more than one quarter's worth of words? Yes?
Well, I understood it to be slightly different than that, but I understand the point that you're making too, which was that they, that the Elections Office charges the candidate based on how many, on how much of the page is used. So if a candidate were running, let's say there were five candidates.
Yes.
So you had a quarter, you had four taking up one whole page, and then one candidate who was on the next page alone.
Takes two full pages, eight quarters.
Right. That the Board would actually pay for more than a quarter, because we would pay for the remainder of the page, so that the candidate would only be charged for the quarter. But I, what I think you've brought up, which is important, is if a candidate elects to write more than, to use more than a quarter of the page, then the candidate should be responsible for paying for the additional amount.
Actually, in reflecting on it, I don't think they can pay for, there's a word limit, and I don't think you can go over the word limit.
That's right. There is a word limit.
There is a word limit.
I thought there was a word limit.
Yeah, there is a word limit.
I would ask you to approve this as it's written, but let us check with the elections, because if that is the case, if someone could go on and write a full page or two pages, then we'd want to add the words at the end, unless the candidate submits a statement longer than one quarter of a page.
But I want to be sure that any candidates that, or prospective candidates that see this are thinking about, because when, the last time I ran, I paid for my candidate's statement, and then they came back at me for more money because they had charged me an estimated, you know, an estimated quarter page, but then there was more than that, and I didn't know enough at the time to realize that I should have said, "Wait a second, the district is paying for that overage amount," which I think is what the district intended to do. So it's a little confusing, but...
I knew enough on my page anyway.
Okay.
Okay, so move to approve with the stipulation, or understanding that the district will check with the Elections Office.
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Oh, Mrs. Parker?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried unanimously. It's getting late. Okay. Future, coming events. I guess coming event is we don't have another meeting for a month. Okay? Future agenda items. Dr. Noel?
I think that the, I think the Board would be, I think it would be very good for the Board to review the proposal about the paid honors program that was submitted by...
In what context? As a conference item?
On the agenda, I didn't review it.
As a conference item, action item?
Conference item.
Okay.
I just, it was, I thought it was so thoughtful that it deserves more attention.
Any others? Mrs. Cordero?
I think that it's a good idea to, for the Board to have some discussion about it, but I'm not sure that I think it would, it's as useful to discuss it in, what do I want to say, in isolation. I think it would be important to look at it in the context of the report that has come back and maybe see if, where it might align, where it might, there might be a choice to make of which direction to go, et cetera, rather than just looking at that document by itself.
No. Yeah, I agree. I hope that staff would review that document and have any input they might have, you know, as we discuss it.
Absolutely. In fact, I think I, I need to reiterate, because I don't think it was really clear at the last board meeting when we did present that very bare-bones, rough outline of what we were thinking about for the evaluation plan of the honors program. It seemed to be that the group of parents thought that that was the full plan, and in fact, we had just started talking about it. And I guess you run the risk of putting something in, on paper like that, and then sometimes you're criticized for not, for just doing it orally. So we just gave that out there. It was not an action item. It wasn't approved by the Board. It wasn't a comprehensive plan. It was just the beginning stages of that. So we can, we intended, we wanted the Board to know that we didn't forget that in there it said we'd be working on it in the summer, so we can certainly come back with our plan, and by all means, we'll be looking at that and working with, we are working with that group. I'm meeting with one of them on Friday. So, yes.
Particularly, the context, Mrs. Cordero, that I had in mind was, what I liked about what they did was they took the plan and then interspersed their comments in it. So it put it in, it put the evaluation in the context, which I had forgotten a lot about the details of the plan, so I read the whole thing, and this was just very coherent.
Mrs. Cordero?
I would like to have a review, or maybe have an update on the attempts, or I don't know, maybe the workings of the high schools' attempts to reach a sort of a more uniform set of policies regarding graduation and graduation activities. If you recall, we had a presentation previously about the fact that the three high schools have different rules and policies regarding who gets to participate and in what, and they were going to be working on that. And I, since it's coming up to the start of the year, by the time we have the next meeting, which I won't be here for, so I hope we don't put this on the next item, on the next agenda, but shortly after that, we'll have, we'll be starting school, and at least one of the high schools had a policy that covered the entire school year. So I'd like to see that before it gets too into the school year. Thank you.
The good news is there was just one student that didn't graduate based upon, so it wasn't a huge problem this year. Mrs. Deacon?
But I agree, the uniformity across the schools is something that all caught our attention and would be worth addressing. And I would also just like to, just on the gate piece, say that I, at the time when we received the last update, it did seem cursory to me, and so I'm really glad to hear that we're going back and looking at and developing something in more depth. Thank you.
Other items?
Mr. Heron, may I comment as well? Board, as you know, we tried to schedule a workshop meeting in June. That not being possible, we tried to schedule it in July. We were not able to have enough board members available, so we found a date later in August. Well, we have three meetings scheduled in August, and we thought it was best to move these workshop items, like the board evaluation, so we can make the changes on the, on the survey, send it out to board members, and hope to have those results then for our August 10th meeting. We'd like to move these items to the August 10th meeting and probably not have a special meeting in August.
Mr. Heron, may I just comment on that? Because I think that I would completely disagree with having our self-evaluation be part of a regular meeting. I really do think that we need an annual recheat time that's not part of a regular meeting where we reflect on our business. And so I think it's just an obligation of the Board to have a special meeting at some point that is outside of the regular time.
Should we continue to hold August 20, then? Which was a, what, Friday?
I didn't hear that date, I don't think, but the...
I think, I think it was August 20, and that...
You can't do it?
No.
I apologize. That's the, those are in, the 19th and 20th are in-service days for City College, so if it was being held during the regular workday, I would not be available.
Probably September.
Well, let me work with you, Dr. Sarvis. We'll figure, we'll try to figure it out.
Thank you.
And, but in any case, this, when you, when you get the self-evaluation, let's do it and send it back in, regardless of when the meeting is, let's just get it, get it all the way, and get it back in. Thank you. Does the Board have any direction as to how, that's the kind of evaluation that the staff can tabulate, can't they? There's no, yeah, so we'll get that back in to Mimi and her staff can...
Mimi can do that.
Yeah, that's, there's not a confidentiality in that one. Okay. Is that it? Have a nice one month off, everybody.
Thank you, Board.
And please, Mr. Hagen, no gophers.
It's ground squirrels.
No gophers or ground squirrels.